Good evening, I just want to make sure you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Lauren, it's pretty windy out there and I've already had my internet go out once today, so hopefully it doesn't happen again, but.
Okay, thanks for the heads up.
Yeah. Hi, John.
Hi Sue.
Hi Wendy.
Hello.
John and Wendy, are you missing us already?
Terribly, on a daily basis.
What's that expression? I question your insincerity.
John, I already told Lauren, but it's super windy up here and I've already lost my internet once today, so if I go, I'll come back as quickly as I can.
Thank you. I've got everything charging for when we lose power. I did not pick up any sandbags yet, though.
It would have to be pretty big to get up to me.
We've had the creek rise behind John and I pretty high, but I don't think it's ever overflowed the banks.
We've had that little creek down at the bottom of the hill flood the road, so we couldn't, you know, kind of get out, but other than that, not too bad. It ends up creating a river down the main street.
Well, it's much needed.
Yes, indeed. It's crazy.
As I'm waiting. I just wanted to say hello as I'm waiting, we're waiting for it to begin. It came on early. I'm Crystal Carey-Hare from the county, new part of that strategic planning presentation.
Hi Crystal.
Someone's lurking in the panel. Hello.
Mr. Mayor, please tell me not all the packets are 322 pages?
No, some are, I think one of the biggest ones we had was 650.
Oh, ouch.
And it's funny, that was at a time when they were mocking the former administration because he didn't want to read a 10-page security briefing. I was like, really? We're going to read 650 pages and we're not getting his salary?
Come on Ben, I loved having my caffer.
See, I found a way to be at City Hall after all.
I was gonna say, it must be a little cold and windy out there in front of the hall.
It's breezy for sure. Sitting out here in the middle of the street, cars keep buzzing by too.
Well, you can wave at people as they go by.
You can maybe write down license plates as they speed through that stop sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is there a stop sign there? Amy, and I think you need a picture with rain.
Yes, a good weather picture and a bad weather picture, right? Yeah, well, we need rain, so.
Yes, we do.
Anything you can do to encourage it.
Mayor Moore, I do show it being 7:00 PM if you'd like to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Yes, may we go ahead and begin, Amy. I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Qatadi City Council and the successor agency to the former Qatadi Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. Ms. Burgess, if you would kindly give us a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey.
Present.
Councilmember Sparks.
Present and unmuted, sorry.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here, thank you very much. Now, if we could take a moment and have a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
States.
Behind the states of America.
And to the republic.
Republic.
Which it stands.
Stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Now, I would like to take a moment and just have a moment of silence, if we may. Thank you very much. And now, I would love to the approval of the minutes and notice the waving of, reading of all the resolutions and ordinances introduced or adopted under this agenda.
So moved. Councilmember Harvey?
Second. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess, if we could have a roll call on that?
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. Now, I'll go through the announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendee viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving agreements to or agreeing to any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely, purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at qatadicity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Qatadi Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 949-312-888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at Or info@qatadicity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. Thank you, and now we will move on to presentations. And I believe we have Supervisor David Rabbit is here with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much, Moore, for allowing me the time tonight, and good evening to Vice Mayor Landman, Councilmembers Harvey, Sparks, and Ford. And congratulations as well to Councilmembers Sparks and Ford, and I look forward to connecting and discussing city-county interests and how we can best work together moving forward. That's the problem with COVID is it's really been difficult outside of phone calls and Zoom to get together. And good evening as well to the city manager, Obid, and all staff present, and thank you to City Clerk Burgess for her assistance in arranging the time for me tonight. With your indulgence, two quick things I'd like to accomplish. First, to thank two former council members and provide a very quick county update. So our board did meet today. In fact, I got off just now at 7 o'clock when they were still taking a few more public comments, so our meeting, I think we might have broke a record. So we did meet today, we finished, I put here, we finished up a little while ago, obviously not true, still ongoing. Two special items on our consent calendar did pass unanimously. The first was a resolution honoring the 14 years of service on the Qatadi City Council by John Del Osso. As you know, a three-time mayor who first was on the council, and John, is this correct, 27 years ago, has served on countless, well, at least I know, at least 10 boards, committees, and commissions, notably a longtime member of the Sonoma County Ag Preservation and Open Space District Advisory Committee. And I know Mr. Del Osso focused on the economic well-being of Qatadi on environmental stewardship and sustainable building practices, something near and dear to me, and a big advocate for parks and open space, recreation, including opportunities for the city and county's youth, and no doubt also including perhaps birding out there as well. I just want to say thank you to John Del Osso for his service, and we do have a resolution to present to him. I think we're going to either send it directly to the city or to his residence, but thank you, John, for that. Also today, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution honoring the eight years of service on the Qatadi City Council by Wendy Skillman. Ms. Skillman, a great listener who strives to find common ground and seeks resolution to make Qatadi and the county a stronger community, serving twice as mayor, including this last year in the midst of COVID. And I do feel for that. It is very difficult to be at the helm during this time and the way that our meetings are being conducted, but she handled it with grace and professionalism, I know. And both Mr. Del Osso and the Skillman, they leave a lasting mark and legacy on their city and community, especially for their work in passing. You all helping pass Measure G in 2014 and Measure S in 2020, ensuring financial stability for Qatadi. So thank you for your service, Ms. Skillman, as well. And Mr. Mayor, if I may, so like I said, our board did meet, I think it was a 10 and a half hour ordeal today. We did adopt, very quickly, we adopted Vital Lands Initiative this morning. It's been, I know, important to at least many of you, but I know John Del Osso. We directed staff to extend and expand the emergency paid sick leave. We did renter protections as well, the eviction ordinance, direction to staff for local aid programs due to COVID, including a $300,000 expenditure per month to local food programs, about a 300, it's about 360,000 again per month, to increase monthly stipends to 1,700 a month for 374 individuals and families through the Cura Project, and 150,000 to legal aid for eviction defense. We're utilizing nearly $5 million that was set aside when I was last chair in a infrastructure sinking fund. That fund now is no longer needed in the same way. It was to cover post-2017 road damage repair due to fires that we thought we might have to do sooner than later, but the PGD funds that we received in the settlement are now taking care of that damage, and that money is being shifted towards COVID relief. Everything about COVID changes daily, and that's both good and bad. When it moves in the right direction, we're all very happy, and the numbers are coming in, and when they look better. And of course, when it goes in the other direction, it's, it's always challenging. The state, speaking of challenging, the state is constantly shifting policies. The new federal, although I will say the new federal administration has some great programs in the hopper, and that we will welcome here at the local level. It is very difficult making sure that you have enough resources, really defining the scale and scope of the issue on who's been affected. It's been a very strange economy where those that have been directly affected the most have been devastated, and while those who continue to work have not been touched nearly as hard. The vaccine rollout has been challenging, to say the least, at all levels of government, really. The county's role is to really facilitate and coordinate to the extent we can. We do not provide direct patient care, and we do that through our health partners. The system, like our healthcare system, really in the country, has splintered, and we are pushing for the state to be both transparent and consistent in helping us. And this week, you saw some major announcements by the governor, shifting some focus on how we're going to be rolling out vaccines from here on out. The bottom line really is supply and demand. We hope that Pfizer and Moderna, they cannot crank out enough vials of vaccine, and meanwhile, patients is going to be required for a while longer. Lastly, we did have a presentation on the county's five-year strategic plan today. The strategic plan will provide the context to inform policies and projects that are prioritized for the next five years. It'll guide how we align short and long-term objectives with operations and budgets, so our actions reflect a clear sense of purpose and demonstrate meaningful progress. We started this some years ago, and lo and behold, each and every year, it seems like a new disaster postponed it, but we're forcing this through because we think it's really important to make sure that we have these goals, these visions, these priorities set. Obviously, we're going to have to still be adaptive as things come up and shift that focus, but even when they do, and you'll see a presentation here a little later, I think even when they do, having that formwork in place is going to provide, I think, for a better outcome long-term. And I want to thank, I know with us tonight will be Crystal Carey-Hill, Deputy County Administrator, and Catherine De Pasqua, our administrative analyst from the County Administrator's Office. They're going to give you a brief presentation a little later and receive your feedback from the strategic plan. I think this is a strategic plan like no other from the county, in that we are really trying to do as much outreach as possible, visiting every city and really making sure that we provide, get that feedback and incorporate it into what we hear going forward. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and as always, I am available for questions, comments, concerns. You can feel free to call me anytime, drop me an email, and I look forward to one of these months, perhaps later this year, actually being in the same room together, celebrating a new, brighter future, less COVID. less COVID, and dealing with the more mundane aspects of running both the city and a county. So thank you very much for the time tonight, very much appreciated.
Thank you Supervisor Rabbit. I certainly appreciate the accolades for our former councilmembers Del Osso and Skillman. I think it's, it's, it's a milestone, and it's very encouraging the way the cities and the county seem to be having a greater level of outreach these days, especially with the, the weekly mayor's meetings and the participation from the Board of Supervisors. I think that's terrific, and I look forward to looking at the five-year strategic plan. And I thank you for presenting. I don't know if there's any questions from the existing council right now. And I am not seeing any hands raised at the moment. So again, thank you Supervisor Rabbit, and again, thank you to Councilmembers Del Osso and Councilmember Skillman so much.
Great, and thank you again very much, I very much appreciate it.
And since you've been on a Zoom all day, we'll let you run.
I appreciate that, too. Thank you, guys. Take care.
Thank you. And I guess now we'll move on to the county presentation on the five-year strategic plan.
Actually, before we get to that, Mr. Mayor, we have the presentation of the Congressional recognition from Representative Mike Thompson. I believe we have Joe.
You're right, I thought they had enough recognition, but we'll go ahead and allow that. Thank you so much. And who will be presenting on that?
Can you hear me? This is Joe Pogger from Congressman Thompson's office.
Yes, Joe, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Thanks, and good evening, and I'll be brief so you don't break the county's record tonight. On behalf of Congressman Thompson, I'd like to extend sincere appreciation to both Councilmember of Skillman and Councilmember Del Osso for your many years of service to the people of Katari. Local government's often a thankless job, and you sure aren't in it for the paycheck. And on your dedication, Congressman Thompson entered statements into the Congressional Record, which were, should have been delivered to you already. It would have been great to present them in person, but here we are. So as long as our country exists, this recognition will stand in the Library of Congress and be a testament to your, your many years of service. Best of luck as you move on to new things, and hope you enjoy having your Tuesdays back. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, I appreciate that. He might indulge me, I might read these into the record if that's appropriate at this time. So the first one is the Congressional Record, the one hundred and seventeenth Congress, July nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Remarks of the Honorable Mike Thompson honoring Councilmember John Del Osso. Madam Speaker, I rise today to honor Katari City Councilmember John Del Osso for his three terms of distinguished service. Our community is deeply grateful for his leadership and advocacy and congratulates him on well-deserved retirement. A resident of Katari since nineteen eighty-six, Councilmember Del Osso has established himself as a pillar of our community. A National Park Ranger by profession, he worked at Point Reyes National Seashore for more than thirty-five years, serving as Chief of Interpretation and Resource Education, and later as Public Information Officer until his retirement in two thousand and nineteen. In recognition of his exemplary efforts in this capacity, he was awarded the U.S. Department of Interior's National Partners in Conservation Award in two thousand and nine and the National Achieving Relevance Award in two thousand and sixteen. Throughout his tenure in city government, Councilmember Del Osso has shown himself to be a leader among leaders. In addition to serving three terms as Katari's mayor, he sat as Chair of the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association in two thousand and fourteen, offering sage advice and wisdom to public leaders from across the community. A steadfast supporter of parks and open spaces and an avid bird watcher, Councilmember John Del Osso distinguished himself as an ally to conservationists in the city and beyond. As a strong advocate for public service, he has no doubt inspired many others to follow in his footsteps and fight for environmental stewardship, safer neighborhoods, and a stronger economy. Aside from his professional and political life, he has also devoted himself to philanthropic causes. Councilmember Del Osso has given his time to numerous social benefit organizations, including stints as a board member of both the Rancho Katari High School Graduation Project and Friends of the San Pablo Bay National Wildlife Refuge. These pursuits further evidence his selfless dedication to our community. Madam Speaker, the city of Katari is indebted to Councilmember John Del Osso for his years of diligent public service. It is therefore fitting and proper that we honor him here today. Very nice. We also have a Congressional Record for former Councilmember Wendy Skillman. Again, January nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one, from the office of Mike Thompson, Congressman Thompson. Madam Speaker, I rise today to honor Katari City Councilmember Wendy Skillman on the occasion of her retirement after more than eight years of dedicated service to our community. Councilmember Skillman's record, record as a public servant traces back to two thousand and eight, when she first moved to Katari. As a member of the city's Community and Environment Commission, she organized beloved events, including the annual Christmas tree lighting and the ever-popular Pasta Feed and Bingo Night. After more than three years as the Commission's Secretary and later Vice Chair, she assumed the role of Katari Planning Commissioner, where she developed strategies in cooperation with local businesses and homeowners to grow the city's economy while protecting its small-town charm. Those she worked with appreciate her ability to find common ground and advance solutions that served everyone's interest. While on her initial foray into city politics, Councilmember Skillman ran a successful campaign for city council in two thousand and twelve. Focusing on affordable housing and championing local small businesses, she generated widespread community support that carried her to a resounding reelection victory four years later. Throughout her term, she has prioritized cooperation and compromise, leading to many successes. Under her watch, the city emerged from its financial troubles, not only keeping public service operational, but expanding the police department, adding new public works employees, and kickstarting recreational programs. Well-respected by her fellow councilmembers, she served with distinction as the Vice Mayor of Katari in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and nineteen, excuse me, and as mayor in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty. Her leadership, dedication, and tenacity will surely be missed by her colleagues and constituents. Madam Speaker, Councilmember Wendy Skillman exemplifies the very best qualities that our community looks to in a leader. It is therefore fitting and proper that we honor her here today. I think those are both tremendous and very nice accolades for both of those former councilmembers. And I would again ask if any councilmembers have any further comments? If not, we will move on. Thank you both so very much for being present, Councilmember Ford.
I just wanted to thank both retiring councilmembers Del Osso and Skillman for their encouragement for my participation in city government, both the planning commission and then to run for council.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. And now we would move on to the presentation of the county's Sonoma's five-year strategic plan.
Good evening, councilmembers. I believe Lauren has, oh, perfect. So as Supervisor Rabbit mentioned, my name is Catherine De Pasqua. I am the Strategic Plan Lead in the County Administrator's Office. And joining me today is Crystal Kiaharo, the Deputy County Administrator. And next slide, please. So the goal of today's presentation is to hear from our city partners before we finalize the county's five-year strategic plan. We'll be presenting the revised goals and objectives, and we'll answer any questions you may have. So to give you some background on our strategic planning process, the Board of Supervisors approved the draft strategic plan on August eleventh, knowing that the plan would evolve after we conducted our employee and community engagement process. The revised plan went to the board earlier today, actually, where the board reviewed the feedback received during engagement and also provided direction for potential revisions to the plan. The final plan will go back to the board on March second for adoption. So to the extent that the city council has formal input that it would like to share, we're recommending that you submit it in writing prior to February twelfth so that it can be included with the final materials that we bring to the board on March second. For questions that you posed today during this presentation, I will be making notes, and we can incorporate those as well. Next slide, please. So as Supervisor Rabbit mentioned, the purpose of the strategic plan is really to inform what county policies and projects get prioritized over the next five years. And strategic plans tend to have different terminology for components of the plan. So here's a quick overview of how we've set ours up. Pillars identify the most important strategic priorities for the county to accomplish over the next five years. The pillars that we've identified are healthy and safe communities, organizational excellence, racial equity and social justice, climate action and resiliency, and resilient infrastructure. Under each pillar, there's a set of goals, and these are the outcomes that we want to achieve. And then under each goal, there's a set of objectives, and these are the measures of progress needed in order to achieve that goal. And then finally, even beyond that, once the plan has been adopted by the board, our board, the assigned lead for each objective will develop an implementation plan in order to meet each objective. Next slide, please. So we've made a significant effort to gather feedback from both employees and community members. And the purpose of that is really to get input and reactions on the draft plan before it's finalized by our board. We also wanted to discover if there's any additional goals or objectives that should be added to the plan. And finally, we wanted to understand the relative priority of the objectives in the eyes of county employees and community members. In both the employee focus groups we hosted and community sessions, we polled participants to see which objectives they think should be tackled first by the county. And this information will be really useful when we start developing our implementation plan. So for employees, we hosted several focus groups, multiple drop and open house sessions, and launched an online survey to gather feedback. For community members, we hosted several community sessions in both English and Spanish, made presentations to numerous community stakeholder groups, including the cities, thank you for having us, developed a session in a box for organizations who wanted to host their own focus groups, and launched online surveys in both English and Spanish. Next slide, please. So up next, we're going to dive into each of the five strategic plan pillars. Each slide contains goals and objectives for that pillar. I will pause after I go through each slide and leave time for you guys to ask questions. As I mentioned before, I'm joined by Crystal Kiaharo. We are not necessarily the subject matter experts, but we have been involved in the engagement process all along. So we will do our best to answer questions, but once we can't answer, we will, of course, log and report back to our board when we bring the materials back on March second. So, next slide, please. So healthy and safe communities, provide quality and equitable housing, health, and human services for all. I'm just going to read the goals, and then I'll give you a minute to go through each of the objectives. So Goal One, expand integrated system of care to address gaps in services to the county's most vulnerable. Goal Two, establish equitable and data-driven distribution of services. Goal Three, in collaboration with cities, increase affordable housing development near public transportation and services. Goal Four, reduce the county's overall homeless population by ten percent each year by enhancing services based on coordination and collaboration. And finally, Goal Five, continue to invest in public safety so that residents and visitors feel safe in our community. So with that, I'll give you a moment to kind of look through this, and please let us know if you have any questions on any of the information on this slide.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was going to wait till they completed the presentation. If we're going to go section by section, though, I did have one kind of question, request, or feedback at least. And looking back to that page you just showed us, packet page nineteen, there's a goal in there, all very good goals. The one goal particularly jumped out at me and that I like was Goal Three, which reads, "In collaboration with cities, increase affordable housing development near public transportation and services." Obviously, as cities, we have a deep concern about local zoning control, but at the same time, we recognize there's a lot of areas of common interest and valuable projects that could arise from that. So I do like that. But even more, I have to say how much I really like that first line, "In collaboration with cities." I appreciate that because historically, that has been challenging. And I say that not as something pejorative, but simply that the county, like any county in this state or any other state, is a large and complex organization, and it deals with large and complex problems. I don't have to tell you that, I think you live it every day. And with that, it's natural that towards any project you're working on, you start running into kind constraints. And that in the past has put us often in positions when these are projects that also involve the interests of our community and get into the city's domain, that we're often, our staff may receive notification or the chance to have be involved or flag concerns that they see too late in the process for anything to be meaningfully done. So I just wanted to kind of flag that, congratulate you on including that, and ask if we can really underline that, perhaps with something as simple as some language that might say that we will involve and work with city staff and electives early and often throughout processes that impact their domains. I, I think that would bring a lot of value to our continued working together in projects and give us much better chances of achieving success. So I'll save my question for the other ones after I have to present it, but I just wanted to put that forward to you. If you could bring that back to the working group, I think that would be very helpful for our city. And I suspect all of our cities and the county as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Councilmember Ford?
Yes, thanks. I wanted to talk about Goal Five on this page, and particularly Objective One, which, which seems a rather weak objective to me. It's, it's an objective with no, no outcomes. It's, it's invest money rather than, you know, produce this change. And so I'd encourage you to think about framing that objective in terms of what effect you hope that training will have on residents in the county and reducing their experience of, for instance, inappropriate use of force. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to talk about Goal Five. I was glad to see in Objective Three where there was mention of the mobile support team. Because being a city the size of ours, we cannot afford to have a whole set of folks, and I know our police department depends upon that support team. I know right now it's limited in service, and I am hopeful that with the tax that was just increased that the resources can be made more broad so that the service is twenty-four seven, seven days a week, rather than the limited service that they provide. But I'm glad to see that that objective is at least in here, because I think that cities the size of ours can use that as a benefit. And I know that our police officers depend upon that mobile support team and are happy to have them as part of the team in resolving some issues for citizens. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Any further questions from the council at this point? Okay. Thank you, Catherine. I do have one quick question. In this particular strategic plan, when was this initiated?
Work developing the framework for the plan began in late two thousand and nineteen. And then in early, I'd say, January two thousand and twenty, our board had its first strategic planning retreat where they identified the five pillars and started refining what the goals and objectives would look like. And then we, in February, formed a strategic planning committee to, or a strategic plan steering committee to really start moving some of the broader ideas forward and developing the goals and objectives. And then this fall is when we launched the community engagement process. So it's been over a year.
Thank you. I imagine it will probably be updated with the new information. Thank you. I imagine it will probably be updated with the new information coming from the communities and with the input of Supervisor Corsi as well.
Yes, so what you're seeing before you today is actually the revised materials that incorporates what we heard in both employee and community input. And then in this next month, we'll be posting the revised materials online to give the public even more time to review. And yes, obviously, give Supervisor Corsi some time with the materials. And then also, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be reaching out to all of our city partners to be getting their feedback as well. So what you're seeing is the latest version of a couple of different versions, and then it may look even a little different when we bring it back on March 2nd.
Thank you.
So if I'm not hearing any more questions on this pillar, we'll move on to the next one. The next slide, please. Thank you. So organizational excellence.
Hang on a minute, Catherine. There are some attendees that have questioned, but it's not an action item. So I don't know if it would be appropriate to have them speak now or maybe at the end of the presentation?
Yeah, I recommend public comment at the end, and then I can try to capture the best I can.
Terrific. Thank you.
So for organizational excellence, be an innovative, effective, engaged, and transparent organization focused on quality programs and services. Goal one, strengthen operational effectiveness, fiscal reliability, and accountability. Goal two, increase information sharing and transparency and improve county and community engagement. Goal three, become an employer of choice with a diverse workforce that reflects our community and an employer with a positive work culture that results in engaged and developed employees. And finally, goal four, seek out grant funding to enhance programs and improve infrastructure.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, so since this whole pillar is really focused around the organization, I would imagine that you would have received a lot more input from the employees. Is that a fair statement? Are these some of the objectives that your employees thought were important for the county to look at?
Correct. I mean, this is a pretty internal-facing pillar. And yes, employees did dig into this pretty deeply because it impacts them. But then also, just because, you know, Sonoma County is the largest employer in the county. So just in terms of making sure that this pillar, you know, keeps its importance, it was important to keep it all in there.
Yeah, I see with what we've had to go through during 2020 that a lot of policies come in around telework policies. So I could imagine that some of that transpired because of what we went through last year. So glad to see that's in there. But thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, I'm not seeing any further questions at this moment.
Great. Let's move on to the next. Next slide, please. Racial equity and social justice. Achieve racial equity in county service provision and ensure a workforce reflective of the community that we serve. Goal one, foster a county organizational culture that supports commitment to achieving racial equity. Goal two, implement strategies to make the county workforce reflect county demographic across all levels. Goal three, ensure racial equity throughout the county policy decisions and service delivery. And goal four, engage key community and internal stakeholders to develop priorities to enhance racial equity.
Councilmember Harvey, is your hand up again?
Yeah, just a quick comment on this. I was kind of glad to see that goal two, that the workforce reflect. Do you have any sense for, you know, how far in or out of bounds the workforce is? Is there a lot of work to do there? A little bit? Just, you know, what does the county workforce kind of look like demographically?
You have to refer to Crystal. That's a great question. Yeah, I should say that's a great question, and I don't have the exact figures, but what I have heard from our Office of Equity Director, Allegria Dela Cruz, is that while the numbers are representative in terms of, for example, Latinx population working in the county, they roughly reflect the population in the county. However, the job levels that people are in don't line up. So if you look at cross-management, it is very underrepresented in terms of Latinx employees. Though there's certainly a lot of work to do there, but I was actually surprised to find out that, you know, in terms of numbers of employees, that it roughly reflects the Latinx population. So definitely still a lot to do in terms of professional development and providing opportunities and just kind of providing that support and employees to promote things like that.
Thank you for that.
And then Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to suggest that I think the objectives under goal four could be significantly strengthened with a focus on voices from communities that are historically marginalized and oppressed. That's not, it doesn't show up in this pillar that I can find, and it really should. And so, you know, objective one reads right now like a PR objective, not like a get, find out what life is really like for people in our community. And I think that goal four needs to start with what are people actually experiencing in communities. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I wanted to tack on to what Councilmember Ford was saying with goal four, that some of these objectives don't feel very strong. They talk about beginning to implement things, developing things, but there are no dates or timelines on them. So I'd like to see them strengthened to provide some measurable, you know, I feel that objectives should be measurable, whether we're on track to complete them, and like to see some timelines and just more specifics added to those.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. I'll go ahead, Catherine.
Really great feedback. Thank you for that. Let's move on to the next slide, please. So climate action and resiliency. Make Sonoma County carbon neutral by 2030. Goal one, continue to invest in wildfire preparedness and resiliency strategies. Goal two, invest in the community to enhance disaster resiliency and become carbon neutral by 2030. Goal three, make all county facilities carbon-free, zero-waste, and resilient. Goal four, maximize sustainability and emission reductions in all county fleet vehicles. And finally, goal five, maximize carbon sequestration through land conservation work and land use policy.
Vice Mayor Landman?
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, again, some very good goals in here. Particularly, something jumped out at me in goal two. Make all county facilities carbon-free, zero-waste, and resilient. And I'm so happy to see that because I recognize how difficult it is as a planner, as somebody responsible to make the necessary budgetary investments for the future when you're being impacted, impacted very heavily by current issues right here and now. But I think now, hopefully now, we do all recognize that we absolutely have to do this, no matter how difficult and how painful it is. And with that, I recognize this is, of course, the county's plan, five-year strategic plan, not mine. But I'd like to respectfully encourage your consideration of moving the county's facilities, as you mentioned here, to Evergreen, Sonoma Clean Power Evergreen. This is clean power that is 24/7 available and clean because of its mix of wind, solar, and geothermal. It's truly renewable, and it certainly achieves that zero-carbon power. I would encourage you with a friendly call to competition. I will note that the small cities of Cattati, Sonoma, and Sebastopol have had all their municipal facilities now for some time, a small amount of time, on 100% Evergreen. And I believe the county is sitting roughly at about 65%. You could make a considerable difference to reach your goals, and also for all of us environmentally in this county, by going to 100% with this plan as soon as possible. So I will hope you will jot that down and take that back for consideration, because I think that would be an important next step to meet that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I don't have any arguments with any of the goals in here. The objectives are all on the techno-solution end of how we're going to solve our way out of the climate crisis. And there's, and so, for instance, in goal two, I think it could be stronger with some objectives about education about the climate crisis and what kinds of, sort of, how our lives are going to have to change in some way. You know, there's, we can't build our way and engineer our way completely out of the climate crisis. And so I think education about systemic things like food systems and waterways and things like that are all a part of this climate action and resiliency piece that I would love to see represented in this pillar somehow, even though I know the county's primary lever is engineering and policy tools like this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. And Vice Mayor Landman, did you have another question or?
Sorry about that. Let me make sure I actually lower my hand this time.
Thank you. And I would just comment on that, Catherine. I think the goals are good. I think it's awfully ambitious by 2030, but I'm optimistic.
Well, thank you, and great notes, especially on the Evergreen and on goal two. And while we at least have to start with a goal, so we'll shoot for 2030. We'll move on to the last pillar, resilient infrastructure. So resilient infrastructure, enhance all hazard resiliency for the community by investing in county roads, buildings and property, communications, and flood protection. Goal one, invest in county buildings and technology solutions to enhance service delivery and improve employee mobility. Goal two, invest in capital systems to ensure continuity of operations and disaster response. Goal three, continue to invest in critical road infrastructure. Goal four, implement county-wide technological solutions to promote resiliency and expand community access. And finally, goal five, support, fund, and expand flood protection.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, while I like, um, goal three, it, the way it's worded, it sounds very auto-centric. And down in the objectives, objective three in particular talks about pedestrian and bicycle facilities. But if you look at the goal, you know, at the top level, it really is, implies more of an auto-centric look at it. So I think it would be better to kind of make investments and things that are friendly to some pedestrians as well as autos. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. I don't see any other questions. I do have a question regarding the goal number one and the overall pardon me, buildings and property and the resilient infrastructure. Is there a, was there any conversation around the strategic plan regarding potentially moving county facilities to downtown Santa Rosa?
Yes, well, as a part of the strategic plan, the conversation's really just about making sure that the facilities, wherever they end up being located, are resilient and carbon-neutral and zero-waste. In a parallel process, the county is also working with a technical advisor to look into where the county center will be located. And I'm blanking on the date, but we did just go to the board for direction, and they recommended that city or county staff look into downtown site more and come back and, you know, between four and six months with more information so that the board can come up with recommendations. So it's a one-winded way of saying that the strategic plan does not dictate a site, but that acknowledges that the county center will be redeveloped somewhere, and there's, you know, intention for that facility to be resilient and carbon-neutral. But the actual location of that is on a separate track.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I really like goal number four. One thing I would suggest for that goal is to call out specifically rural communities and low-income communities that are underserved by broadband and high-speed internet. It's sort of, I think that the wording of the goals is pretty good, but it, it sort of just says across the community and across the county. And I'd like to see those people who are underserved really called out.
And Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, I'd like to add to what Councilmember Sparks said, because typically what keeps happening with access in general is it seems to be that companies are only willing to support the highly populated areas. And so that does impact areas, both rural and even something like our community. We've had situations where businesses have tried to have internet access, and it's just not available. And when they check on it, it's that there's just not enough population to warrant them to do that. So I think it's important, I like the across the county, but I think it really does need to be across the whole county, including smaller cities and the rural areas.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. I don't see any other questions from the council at this point, so I will open it up to the public to share their thoughts on the strategic plan. Ms. Lobby? Ms. Lobby, are you muted? We'll come back to Ms. Lobby. Ms. Crump Shears, go ahead.
Thank you. Overall, I think that the work that has been done and the work that needs to be done is going to benefit our county wonderfully. I echo, however, Ben Ford's thoughts about very specific objectives. I spent 33 years in public education, mostly in special education. And one of the most important features of the services that we gave to children and adults was being able to say, this is where we are, this is where we're going to be by a certain period of time. And as a community member, that kind of accountability, I want to see somewhere in here at some point. I think it is very important. Otherwise, how does one gauge and measure one's progress? My second comment is actually a question. In addition to city staff members, council members, will there be additional community involvement in looking at any or all portions of this? in looking at any or all portions of this? And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crump Shears. Ms. Lobby?
Thank you. Sorry for the problem. I have a new computer and just working on it. It's really nice to be here as they're talking about these goals. I want to notice the healthy, safe communities pillar goal four, which is reduce the homeless by 10% a year. This is way not good enough. That's 20 years to get down to where the people who are sleeping out in the cold and the rain and the wind tonight are going to have some kind of shelter. It doesn't have to be real expensive to do, but we need to get people into shelter way before 10 years from now, 20 years from now. In terms of the racial equity and social justice goals, I just want to echo some of the comments I've already heard that really we need to be measuring the outcome, not the process. So we don't really need to have a goal that says we're going to try to do things. We need to have a goal that says this will be reached. And I'd like particularly in terms of racial equality and social justice for those goals to be as not just about the county government, but about the community. So for instance, we could have a goal that says we're going to strengthen the African American community by investing some dollars, by working with their leadership, by a number of ways, in light of the fact that historically they've been barred from being part of the county. And so their community is underpopulated. So there's a bunch of goals that I can think of at the top of my head that I would like to see the county invest in. But I just want to repeat, let's, let's not have our goal be the process of doing something. Let's have our goal be what we want to achieve concretely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lobby. I don't see any other hands on public comment on there. So I will bring it back to the council. I don't see any further hands on that. I would like to thank Ms. DePosco and Ms. Cuajado for their presentation on this tonight. I think it's a, it's a fantastic start for the county to incorporate input from the communities and the cities. And I appreciate you presenting that tonight.
Thank you so much for having us. It was a really helpful conversation. So thank you.
Thank you. And now we will go on to approval of the final agenda. Mr. Obed, do we have any changes to the agenda?
You, Mayor, no proposed changes, but I did want to call out that a couple of, a couple of materials were posted after the packet was originally posted. And this is for consent calendar items nine C and nine nine D and also regular calendar item 11 C. So all those are available on the website, but they're they were posted after the original packets. They supplement what we're going to talk about tonight.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, with that, I will open up citizens business and comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017 dash zero two, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes and length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for reasonable time or disability accommodation has been requested. With that, we'll look at the attendees and Mr. Proudie. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing me. I want to speak about the survey conducted regarding racial bias in Katati. I want to thank the council and staff for funding the survey. I think this is a really important work. We are a majority white community consisting of approximately 10% Latinx residents and smaller proportions of other racial groups. In order to grow our town and improve the quality of life for all residents, we have to encourage a multiracial community among Katati residents. It's important for all of us to highlight inclusive values in government and the business community. We have to make sure that all of our residents feel safe and they feel heard and valued. It's difficult, if not impossible, to foster a sense of community if residents of minority backgrounds feel unseen or mistreated, particularly by city government. The surveys highlighted a few alarming pieces of information. Looking forward to the presentation by the city manager about the survey, but I'm particularly concerned that two in five residents surveyed observed incidences of racism in Katati and one in five experienced an incident themselves. One in 10 reported experiencing a racist incident involving a city employee, mostly involving the Katati Police Department. I'd like to see the city commit to anti racist policies and form an ad hoc committee to investigate how our government and city departments can contribute to actively combating racism. I'd like to see the police department investigate if any officers or staff have ties to white supremacist organizations. And if any are found, appropriate action must be taken. In my view, that would be nothing short of immediate dismissal. We have to be part of the solution and set an example that racism will not be tolerated in Sonoma County. I hope this was the appropriate place to lodge this comment. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Proudie. Ms. Lobby?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, I'm Adrian Lobby. I live in the Red Hill apartment complex. I mentioned the homeless people who are sleeping out in the rain and cold tonight. And I would like to suggest that we have a little task force of city staff and police so that when there are sudden changes in weather and storms coming in, especially the cold that's been here for two days now, that they go out and check with the homeless people who live in Katati and try to find situations for them where they can be warm and dry. And I'd like to see that as a project that we take on so that we don't have this again where some of our citizens are out in the cold while the rest of us are all warm and dry and toasty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lobby. I'd like to remind any of the call in listeners that if you do want to speak, you have to dial star nine on your phone to raise your hand and we can go ahead and recognize you. Daniella Delario?
Hi, thank you. My name is Daniella, Daniella Delario. And I just wanted to thank the city of Katati for doing the survey, the poll of its residents about racism. And I did want to just echo what some of the other callers have said. There are some concerning things that have come up. Two out of five reported observing racism, one out of five experienced it themselves. And people with household incomes lower than $60,000 a year or who speak a language other than English at home are more likely to to disapprove of the Katati Police Department than other residents. So I just wanted to highlight those couple of things that came out of the survey. I'm really glad that our city has done this survey. And I just also want to echo that I think our city should commit to to anti racism work and also to helping the homeless. I am, I am also optimistic about measure O having passed. I think that's great. And I'm hoping that our mobile support team can be become 24/7 or something similar if we can have a program similar to cahoots, you know, that so many have talked about something that I know Katati is such a small city, but if we can get together with other cities and institute something similar to cahoots, I think that would really be the way to go. And that would be very helpful for people who are, you know, sleeping out in the cold nights like tonight. Yeah, so I think that's, that's the best way to go. And thank you again for, for your work and for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other community members or public that would like to speak? Mel Browning? Go ahead.
Hi, yes, my name is Mel Browning. I live in Katati and work in Riner Park and work nearby. I wanted to comment on the survey that was done. And I really want to thank the city council and the city of Katati for doing this. I know that it was a big undertaking. I think it's really important. I just wanted to point out that, you know, the way we use statistics and things like that can really say a lot about what our true focus is. And some of the things that kind of concern me is that when we leave out some of the statistics, like so when things are not highlighted, when it comes to like somewhat serious problem, like racism is a somewhat serious problem, or observing racism some of the time, or experiencing racism some of the time, racism some of the time, then that data gets lost. I feel like if it's somewhat serious or it happens sometimes, that's still not okay. And I feel like a lot of times it was just when it's an extremely or very serious problem, it was pointed out, like nine and nine percent and 12% consider it a serious problem, but then 17% considered a somewhat serious problem. And I think when you take that in in totality, that's, that's a, that's a bigger percentage. And it's actually concerning. And so also the point of when we have 79% white respondents, and then we have an approval rating of police around the same amount, that also tells us something. And again, I really want to know the experiences specifically of BIPOC folks within our community, because those are the folks that are experiencing the racism and the concerning experiences of those folks feeling unsafe is what's really important. And I really, really hope that we take that in consideration in terms of forming an ad hoc committee to address these things and to also consider being a part of the mobile response team. Hopefully, it will develop into a cahoots model, because I think that that's an appropriate use of using a community approach for addressing issues of mental health crises instead of having a police respond. So I think we can develop different ways of addressing public safety in our community that creates more of feeling the safety than than solely relying on police. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Crump Shears?
I have a quick question. Will there be an opportunity for public comment after the presentation of the poll results?
There will be. We're not going to let you participate, but we'll have public comment.
You just try and hold me back, sir.
Yes, we will. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I will hold off.
You're welcome. Carol? It looks like you're on mute, Carol.
Okay.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Carol Williams, and I live in Katati. And I just wanted to mention that in the Press Democrat yesterday, there was an article about the city of Petaluma, which is committed to creating a citizen led police oversight committee. And they had a long meeting with a lot of participation yesterday about that subject and the whole issue of police reform and something like an expanded model of of cahoots type policing that would would help mental people with mental health crises and other issues that need more social welfare work than police work. And that also, the city of Santa Rosa, the city of Roner Park and Healdsburg are pursuing that as well. So I think that Katati should get on board and be in that group of cities as well.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more further public comment? And just as a reminder, if you're calling in, use it star nine on your phone to raise your hand. And seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll come back to council. And now we will move on to our consent calendar. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I'd be happy to make a motion, but if you would like one, but I would also like to thank both Damian and Angela for answering my questions on the CAFR. So I really appreciate them getting back to me my questions. So if you would like a motion, I'd be happy to make one.
I would be happy to accept a motion as I do not see any other comment from the council.
I would make a motion that we approve the consent calendar items.
And this is Vice Mayor Ammon. I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, if you would take a roll call on that?
Councilmember Ford?
Or not?
Maybe she's muted.
Can you hear me?
I'm all ready to say yes.
Did we lose Lauren?
I think we did.
Hi, everybody. Can anybody hear me?
Just give it a second and then we might switch to a backup plan.
We can always come back to that consent calendar vote.
Yeah, if the mayor would like, I could just lead the roll call vote right now.
Terrific. If that would be sufficient, that'd be great.
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Landman. Sorry about that.
Yes.
I don't, you can see, you can tell I don't do this very often. Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. And thank you, Mr. Obed. That's why we have professionals doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, so that has passed 5-0. And then we'll move on to any future direction, any direction, future agenda items that the council would like to present?
Mayor Moore, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you, Ms. Burgess.
Okay, thank you.
We had a rookie filling in for you, but he did okay.
I can hear.
So I don't see any hands raised regarding any future agenda items. So at this point, we'll move on to our regular agenda. And the first one is item number 11A, appointment of a planning commission member and measure G, citizens oversight committee members. Mr. Obed, I believe this one is yours?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So just real briefly, the process, obviously, we're looking at planning commission members and measure G oversight members for our two new council members, Ford and Sparks. The planning commission process is codified and the positions were advertised. And we have one application for Councilmember Ford, and that's Neil Hancock, who he nominated as a planning commission member. Who he nominated as a planning commission member. And then the Measure G Oversight Committee follows the exact same nomination process as planning commission by resolution, so. That was also advertised, and we have two nominees. We have Marjorie Crump Fears as Ben Ford, Councilmember Ben Ford's nominee. And continuing service for Ariane Esq, who is Councilmember Laura Sparks. And. I will also just add before I conclude that we are re-advertising for that second planning commission right now. And so we hope to. Have some more applications in the near future that we can bring back to round out the planning commission. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. I don't know if there are any questions from the council at this point. I don't see any hands raised. I do see hands raised. Councilmember Ford?
I would just like to say first, I'm proud to point to recommend these two people for appointment to their respective bodies. But I'd also like to ask if we could tack on a request that the mayor. Send a letter to the two people who are completing service on these two bodies, which is Stephen O'Nines on the Planning Commission and. Amy Lyman on the Measure G Oversight Board, who has been on that oversight board since it began, I believe.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. I'd be happy to send a letter. I don't know what you'd like me to put in there. Now, I'm teasing. I acknowledge their their work that they put in for so many years. I do appreciate that.
Thanks.
I'd also like to to thank Mr. Hancock for for reapplying for that position. I think that's very good of him, and I would like to thank. Ms. Crump Shears for applying for that citizen oversight, and also. Ms. Esq for also reapplying on citizens oversight. I think that's terrific. I appreciate the community involvement and the support. So with that in mind, I would welcome a motion to. For these appointments.
Move to approve. This is Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to second that, but I believe this is an action item. Did we want to do a quick see if there's any comment?
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Landman, I will open that up for public comment. Ms. Crump Shears, go ahead.
I have a question. Who's my mentor if I make it onto this body?
It's not me.
That's it.
Um, I I would obviously be happy to to help orient on all the new committee members.
But I imagine as well, pardon me, this is Councilmember Ford, I imagine as well that the continuing members of the committee will also be happy to to. Work with you. They've all been on for a while.
Thank you so much. Seeing no further requests to speak on a public comment, I will bring it back to the council. We have. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion in a second. If we would call, if you would call for the roll call, Ms. Burgess?
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lammon?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item eleven B, request for the approval, request for approval of a resolution granting an extension of the previously approved commercial cannabis retail and distribution permit. For Monahan Pacific EVA Indy Three at eighty-one forty-five Gravinstein Highway. In the commercial Gravinstein Highway CG Zoning District, PA eighteen dash four four.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, and members of the council. This is Noah House, Director of the City's Community Development Department. I have this item this evening. And Lauren, if you would advance to the next slide. While we're waiting, I will just like to say that Steve Monahan is in attendance as an attendee and may have a few words to offer after a brief presentation. So as identified the project before the council this evening is a proposed adoption of a resolution. To approve an extension of a previously approved commercial cannabis retail and distribution permit. Which would allow Monahan Pacific to operate retail cannabis facility, retail facility at eighty-one forty-five Gravinstein Highway. And Gravstein, commercial Gravstein Highway zoning district, next slide. This slide is just a brief aerial to orient everyone. The site is on the corner, northwest corner of Alder Avenue and Highway one sixteen. It's previously developed with three existing structures which are currently being repaired. While the city is reviewing a design review application to make site design and building design modifications. Next slide, please. So there's a fair amount of background in the staff report. I'm going to try to keep it brief here, but just to highlight that the city did adopt our commercial cannabis ordinance in February of two thousand thirteen. Shortly after that, the applicant was granted an approval to operate a commercial cannabis retail location, private retail business at this location. Kind of dovetailing with that approval later in the year, in November, the council approved an agreement to operate, which was essentially a legal agreement that. Incorporated specific milestones necessary to keep this approval valid, and that's because the. Original intention was for the applicant to construct an entirely new building on site, and the city had. Essentially was trying to keep or ensure progress is made towards that development in order for this permit to be implemented. There's some other background, but just to skip ahead. The in June of two thousand twenty, this permit technically expired, but shortly after that, the city council had adopted extension. Related to COVID impacts in September of two thousand twenty. And then we'll get to the brief analysis portion of the presentation on the next slide. So a- as everyone is aware of, the COVID nineteen economic impacts have been extensive. And I think most of the folks here are aware that this project that was proposing to construct a new retail location. Was part of overall redevelopment of the site, which included a large assisted living facility on that property. As is discussed in the staff report, shortly after the approval of that. Project, the applicant contacted staff, let us know that financing for the assisted living facility had. Was no longer available. They were continuing to pursue options, but as the impacts of COVID. Kind of became more and more widespread, the likelihood of getting that project financed essentially was 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 a nonstarter. So the applicants let us know that they were still interested in pursuing some type of project on the site. That would allow them to implement their commercial cannabis operation. After kind of looking at a few concepts, the applicant indicated they were interested in renovating the existing structures on site. Which they do have a right to repair their existing buildings, so they pulled a building permit and began repairs to those existing buildings. At the same time, or very shortly after, they filed a design review application proposing to. Redesign the facades of the structures, build a full, you know, full site improvements to support the future use of those buildings, including, you know, stormwater improvements. Utility improvements, parking lot landscaping, et cetera, and that's currently under review by the department. And so, given the applicant's demonstrated commitment to renovating and restoring the existing structures there. And the city's kind of commitment to cannabis as a part of our economic development strategy, staff worked with the applicant to. Present to the council requesting approval of the resolution, which would grant a two hundred and forty-day extension. Of this previously granted approval, while also incorporating the construction milestones which were identified in the past legal agreement. With that. I'll move to the next slide. Which is the recommendation by the Community Development Department that the city council adopt this resolution and approve the requested extension. Allowing Monahan Pacific to ultimately implement their past approval. For a retail cannabis sales facility at eighty-one forty-five Gravstein Highway in the CG Zoning District. And I'm available for any questions you have, and as I mentioned, I think Steve Monahan, as an attendee, may want to give a few brief words, or at a minimum, he is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. House. I do see a hand raised by Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. What none of this mentions, there was a lot of discussion around traffic and traffic traffic safety in that area. And this project sounds like it's just a renovation, but how is the traffic being addressed since? Being so dramatically changed? As we know, that's not a great intersection there. Curious as to whether that information is going to come back to us, or is that something that you are going to address? But I know that traffic in that area is of great concern. So if you could help me with that, I'd appreciate it.
Excellent question, Councilmember Harvey. So and you are absolutely correct. Traffic and kind of access to and from the site was one of the main concerns. That staff has identified in our issues letter that we sent to the applicant on their design review application. And we did ask that there, they supplement that application with. Input from a traffic engineer, so a version of a traffic study will be provided, which will analyze the traffic and circulation. Improvements needed to address the future use of the site. All that being said, I will I will say that design review is a gives the city less. Kind of teeth, so to speak, with regards to addressing impacts. Because it's less oriented to use and it's more oriented to the design of the existing site. All that being said. Staff did reiterate the concerns over traffic. Which came from every department that reviewed it, the Police Department, Public Works Department, and Community Development. And this the applicant has committed to addressing those concerns with analysis by a licensed traffic engineer.
Thank you. That helps. I'm hoping we're going to see that because it sounds it sounds like it may happen, but. We may or may not be able to do anything about it, is what basically I'm hearing you saying.
Well, it will be so the traffic study will be incorporated into the ultimate design and will be presented to the planning commission.
Okay.
But so I'll leave, yes.
Okay, all right, well, that's.
There's a different nexus for design review than if they were requesting a use permit or a subdivision or something along those lines.
Right, I just would, you know, we had discussed that in in great detail about how all the traffic was going to work. When the whole area was going to be done, and now this kind of puts a wrinkle on that, and I just want to be sure that people are safe getting in and out of there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Councilmember Ford?
First of all, I thank you, Mayor Moore, and thank you, Director House, for the presentation. I I wondered, Director House, if you could, I I drove by that site. It's a. Obviously, a high-traffic area. What level of work on a building is repair before it turns into something requiring design review? I it doesn't look much like Red's Recovery Room anymore, and I'm just. You say they're currently repairing, and they currently have an application into. To remodel or to change the facade. So can you fill me in on the difference between repair and what requires design review?
Absolutely. So I think pointing out the the lack of resemblance to Red's Recovery Room is a good point. The Red's Recovery Room structure was actually demolished under a separate building permit after they had a fire. About, I think about twelve months ago, that site, when the fire department responded to the fire, had to put it out. It was deemed to be hazardous. And we worked with the applicants to to resolve that hazard by demolition of the site. All that being said, generally, a repair is like-for-like. So on a commercial building, to make changes, you should be going through a design review process. Prior to getting a building permit to implement changes. None of the approvals that have been granted by the city. Permit any changes to those buildings. That being said, there have been some steps made by their contractor that have gone beyond the scope of the building permits that we issued. And we are working with the applicant to address those. And they have essentially stopped work on any of those implementing changes, but they are also trying to do what they can to. Get the site as weather tight as possible under a repair permit. And I will also say, you know, an existing wall. Doing a like-for-like repair. Has no problem. Unfortunately, some of those walls and some of the construction was out of age that it didn't meet current code. So then they had to reframe it in a way that would meet the current standard, so it is essentially a new newly constructed wall, but in the exact same location and design of the previous structure.
Thank you. Mayor Moore, may I continue? I had one other.
Absolutely.
So the other was to follow up on Councilmember Harvey's point, which is that this request for the extension of the of the cannabis permit is really our only opportunity. To address the kinds of things like traffic that come with a use permit, I believe. So I don't think. I think if we want to talk about traffic impacts, this is our only shot. It's not a design review issue when when that comes back. So if. If that's correct, let me know. Otherwise, I can let it go till next time.
That's a, I think, a good observation. One of the interesting things about how the cannabis ordinance was written is that it identifies cannabis permits as permitted uses. So they're permitted uses in the zoning context, but also subject to council approval. In the cannabis ordinance language, so it's it's kind of an odd. Code process where it doesn't require a use permit, as as you pointed out, so we don't get the discretionary hooks that we often may have through some types of development. And I don't have a good answer as to why the choice was made to do it that way, but that is how it's written.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Vice Mayor Lammon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I clearly, I mean, my initial thought with this particular development and all our developments and all our developers in the city. Particularly during this year is in any way I can help them. Give extensions, do things to help bridge what they're dealing with. I'm certainly open to that. Having said that, I do have some concerns. I I want to say that. Councilmember Harvey certainly hit on a key subset of them, talking about the traffic plan that was. Very well-developed for that site, but looking at the bigger picture, my concern is previously, we had. Two new buildings for two different uses. Now, one use that one use is no longer available. And what we're doing evidently is doing some sort of ad hoc repairs to some very old. Buildings. To potentially use them for this use. And I have concerns about. How do we maintain the design values and the quality that were so carefully discussed and argued over? That are so important to that region? Now, this is one of the first developments in the side of. Gravinstein sometime in our city limits, and as it comes in, it will kind of set a standard. If it's well-done, attractive, well-developed of quality. That's a good thing, and it will probably draw more development like that and be something that's beneficial for the neighbors who do live in that region. If it's not, then clearly there's concerns with that. And I feel like I'm being asked here to commit somewhat tonight to the one lever we have, it looks like, to have control over this, which is. Agreeing to the extension of this permit. Before I have an idea of what this thing's going to look like, how the traffic's going to work, I had a very clear plan before, and I'm not seeing that here. And unless I'm missing something, if staff or somebody can clarify something, I'm really loathe to let go of this. One lever we have. Knowing the previous shacks that were there, I'm not sure what they're going to turn out like. I support the development cannabis in our areas of where we zone this. I think that would be beneficial for the city's bottom line, but not enough to allow something that's. Problematic in terms of the development. So if somebody could give me a better sense of that. I have, as I've alluded to, some real concerns about this. I really frankly, I'd like to see if we're going with essentially a completely different plan here. I want to see what it's going to look like, and I'd really like to see it come back to me before I gave a thumbs up to it. So that's where I'm at right now. So anything you can speak to, Mr. House, would be helpful. So that's where I'm at right now. So anything you can speak to Mr. House would be helpful.
Uh, yeah, absolutely, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Lammon. I will let the, or I maybe would ask the applicant to speak to maybe their vision for how they anticipate redeveloping the site. The proposal right now is to um, put the commercial cannabis location in the middle building and build out the other two buildings for other retail uses. And they've talked about restaurants and bakeries and those types of things. Uh, I will say the commercial repair permits that we're issuing will not grant occupancy of those buildings. So they're not gonna allow any specific use to move into them. Uh, it's essentially from staff standpoint, uh, the applicants demonstrating real effort and by investing in their property. And in order to move forward with implementing what they had was an approved permit. Uh, to your points, the design review package that we reviewed did have extensive comments. And it's my understanding the applicants uh, have prepared a very thorough response. We've met with their engineer and architects multiple times on site. I've given a fair amount of direction uh, to them with regards to the city's expectations for the design. Uh, but with that, I will let the applicant kind of speak for what they've communicated to me as their vision for redeveloping the property in a way that meets the city's expectations while also allowing them to meet their needs.
But Mr. House, that, that's all well and good, but having, it's one thing to have a plan. It's agreed to, it's another thing just to be given a general vision. No matter how much we flush that out in discussion, there's no teeth to that. And I don't know what I get. And uh, that's, that's not selling me terribly. I'd be happy to hear from Mr. Monahan and perhaps he can say something that will call me, but uh, but I'm not sure if this is the ideal direction. I'm, I'm supportive of seeing this business go forward, but not just completely opening the gates to whatever is chosen to be improved out of those very old buildings and put in place. That's not the ideal way to do business for a city, even as small as ours in the 21st century. Even as we do our best to try and help developers develop, that seems to me a step too far.
So uh, I don't know if this is helpful, but I will, I will add that the, the resolution that's proposed for this item. You know, the general intent.
Can I interrupt you just for a moment? Uh, before you get into that, I thought I would recognize Councilmember Sparks because um, her concerns may also be addressed with the response that you have. Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would, I would just ask for some um, help for me to understand this situation. When, when the permit for, when the cannabis permit was originally approved, it was with this very different project with construction of new buildings. My question is, I don't know if it's possible for you to answer because it's sort of speculative, but wh-what's your feeling of, would we have approved this permit originally uh, with a plan to repair the existing buildings? Um, and the amount of development that's within the operator's vision now? Would, is there a sense that that's something we would have signed on to in 2018 when we originally approved the cannabis permit? Or, or what are the reasons that we approved it with this very different project? I hope that question makes sense.
Yeah, so this is Noah House. So a couple of things I would say. So I, I don't want to speculate too much on, on what would have happened in 2018 prior to my time being with the department or the city. I will say um, you know, very shortly or almost concurrently with the city adopting these regulations, Mr. Monahan engaged with us uh, and expressed his interest uh, to be a partner with the city to obtain and ultimately implement a cannabis permit approval. In addition, the uh, restrictions on the locations allowed in the city for commercial cannabis retail sales essentially preclude very many other sites from um, uh, being able to move forward with this implementation. So one of the, one of the key kind of limitations is that there's not a couple of things. One, I think the ordinance was written to Councilmember Ford's point earlier, anticipating reoccupancy of existing buildings, right? These uses are permitted in the zoning code and then the ordinance uses a council approval uh, for, of the individual permits as the mechanism to, for lack of a better term, insert some discretion in an otherwise permissible use per the zoning code. So it's, it's kind of a, a hybrid approach to how the code is written. And then the other kind of unique factor is, is just the, the economic reality associated with redeveloping all those sites with a, a project that essentially the assisted living project was carrying the retail, which in some levels was speculative as to what would ultimately be operating in there, even though the applicant had full intention to implement their cannabis permit. And the use of this agreement was to give both sides certainty that each of us would, would, would kind of stay together as that site was redeveloped, right? Because, and this is like, I think getting to Councilmember or Vice Mayor Lammon's points, you know, giving this now without seeing ultimately what the redevelopment's gonna look like is a, is a concerning step to make. What the applicant has told me is without that certainty of having this approval, they're concerned with investing the amount of, of dollars into the site that it's gonna take to implement the permit. So we're in a little bit of a chicken or egg situation. And I understand that the council feels that this maybe is only looking at partially uh, what the overall project is gonna be, because you would be blessing extending this permit without seeing the, the facility that it's gonna be operating from. That's completely legitimate. So I will just say that the applicant has a development application. I did not intentionally, I did not include it with this application, the plans, because they're somewhat apples and oranges. Uh, although I think from Councilmember or Vice Member, Vice Mayor Lammon's perspective, a holistic perspective is helpful uh, in making the decision. I don't know if that helps or if City Manager Obed would like to add to it. And one other point, uh, as a property owner, they do have a right to repair their existing buildings. So the city cannot deny that right to a repair. Where our, our discretion comes in is, is what the ultimate uses in those buildings become is based on the zoning criteria.
Mr. Obed, shall we uh, defer to Councilmember Harvey on this or come back? Or do you think it's appropriate to?
Well, I was, I, I think I was, I mean, I was just gonna add really quickly that um, and I, and this might, it might answer uh, Councilmember Harvey's question too. So my understanding on the, you know, the, the intent behind the approach on this is that we, with the resolution that's on this item, um, it basically says that we're granting this 240-day extension, but it's tied to um, a variety of things in the resolved clauses. Um, I guess the most applicable for this discussion is, is the discretionary um, design review approval by planning commission. So I, I think that was the, um, that was the intent to try to thread the needle by, by um, you know, bringing all this, the full, you know, once all the pieces are together um, and the staff is, you know, has analyzed all of it, that it would all go to design review. And um, sort of be vetted at that point in terms of final, final approval and design review or, or ensuring whatever modifications are needed are, um, are included. Um, I, I do know that, you know, design review doesn't have all the same teeth that, you know, some of these other, you know, subdivision or other mechanisms have. But um, it is a, it is a, a planning commission approval and they have, it's all, it all hangs on approval of the planning commission, um, design review. So um, I think the thinking was that they would have to bring a complete good project through to that um, to design review, to, in order for it all to kind of tie together and move forward. Otherwise, um, this extension wouldn't be valid and obviously neither would design review approvals be granted. If there's, you know, provided there's the um, you know, a reason that that the planning commission denies it or approves it, whichever way it goes.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm kind of where Vice Mayor um, Lammon is. I want to see this move forward. Um, I, I think it's important and I, I think that it has always been their intention um, to have this there. And, and as Noah pointed out, it's been our intention to work with them. What I'm concerned about is I, I almost feel like I'm signing a blank check. You don't know what you're gonna get, you don't know what it is and just trust me. And, and I'm, there's so many pieces that, that we're not seeing. And, and that makes me pause a little bit. So uh, my question is, is do we have the leeway here to maybe issue a shorter extension? So that we can see some of these things come back and then, you know, kind of do it again? So that we don't just kind of write this blank check and not know what we're getting? Is that possible?
You absolutely do have the right and the ability to grant a shorter extension. Uh, one of the, one of the benefits of using this resolution separate from that legal agreement is the, it's, the council has discretion to put any conditions in this resolution that they feel are necessary to support the action that they're granting, if, if they choose to grant it. Uh, and, and to City Manager Obed's point, um, one of the conditions for the approval, the extension to be valid is that the planning commission grant design review approval for the redevelopment of the property.
Okay, I'm not sure that I feel much better, but, okay.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I was gonna suggest, I'm, I'm anxious to hear public comment, perhaps including the applicant and, and before we get into too much much more council discussion.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Ford. I was planning on calling the applicant to answer a few questions for me. And, and then Vice Mayor Lammon.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, I think with the way this action is tonight and with the process of the applicant having gone ahead and begun repairing of these buildings and knowing the zoning use that's allowed there, I, I feel like I'm in a gentle way having my arm twisted to accept whatever's being developed. And like my colleague, Councilmember Harvey, I, I really have a concern with that. I want to know what I'm getting. So I, I want to ask, can we bring this back? Is there any time constraint that's problematic to not extend this permit? Can we extend it at a later date if we like what we see? Can we uh, re, can we revisit granting it if we don't uh, move it forward tonight? I'd like to know what my options are, because I'd like to see if we could bring this back, because, and I'm open to listening to Mr. Monahan very much. But unless there's something different that really changes my mind, I have to say at this point at least, for him and public comment, I'm not sold. Uh, I'm moving forward with this. I, I just, too, too many things are unanswered here. And it doesn't seem like it's in the best interests long-term for that area in the community. So if, if somebody could, I'd love to hear from the public, but a staff could very quickly say, what are our options? Is this, is there any problematic in bringing this back after letting staff, perhaps in Mr. Monahan, perhaps develop a better vision that you can present to us and exactly what we're going to see potentially there? Something does have a few teeth at least to it, a snag, a little tooth or two, and something that this council could live with and feel much more comfortable getting behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lammon. Um, a couple of questions I have for Mr. House. I went and looked at those properties just yesterday. Are those brand-new foundations underneath by those buildings?
The building on the far, the farthest to the west does have significant amount of foundation work done.
Okay. Um, and no foundation work on the other two buildings?
Uh, I cannot commit to that. As I mentioned, they had some issues with one of their contractors who went beyond the scope of some of the work. And we're working with them or with the approved plan, so we're working with them to clarify that. And it's been, I think, three weeks since I've been on the site, walking the buildings and s, and actually seeing what was done. Um, and it's my understanding they are proposing some minor foundation kind of upgrades in order to support the way that they're now having to reframe those buildings to beat the building code. It's my understanding that work has not been done yet, but you've been there more recently than I have.
Thank you. Uh, and now I'd like to ask a couple of questions on Mr. Monahan, if he's available.
Uh, hello, I'm here. Thank you very much.
Hi, Steve. Thank you very much. Um, the, the first question I want to ask, and I will open it up to my fellow councilmembers, um, but the first question I want to ask on this is um, this was a whole packet that was inclusive of uh, assisted living facility and some retail in the front that would, that would incorporate um, some cannabis sales there as well. Now we have no assisted living facility. So now it looks like it's just gonna be a strip mall and a cannabis retail there. I mean, it's, it, to me, it looks nothing like it was presented in 2018. Now, uh, I heard that it was difficult to get financing for the assisted living facility. Was there any other consideration? I mean, how difficult can it be to get financing on assisted living facilities when we know there's a dire need for assisted living facilities in the, in uh, the county and, and, you know, California in general? Does something that you can answer for me?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, what happened is uh, we began the process to get the assisted living projects approved in 2014. Uh, and the final approvals came in uh, uh, the, I guess, third or fourth quarter of 2019. In the intervening time, uh, several facilities were built in Ronard Park. And those other facilities um, basically sucked up all of the demographic support for our assisted living facility. So when we went to get financing for the project, uh, we were turned down by uh, many lenders. Uh, and all of them citing a lack of demographic support for uh, a new project in that location.
And this was in 2019?
Uh, this was in early 2020 and uh, going through, yeah, around late 2019, early 2020.
Okay, so if we're not in a position where it's economically feasible or can't get the financing for an assisted living, what do you think would be appropriate for that other area?
Um, uh, right now, given COVID, uh, we're trying to figure out what that is. Retail is very severely impacted uh, during this time. And uh, you know, given the zoning district and other constraints, we're, we're in the process of trying to figure out what is the highest and best use for that project from our perspective. But we do not, we do not yet have uh, we, we don't, we don't know yet what that would be.
Okay. W- w- if that's the case, um, that could languish there for years and years and years. Um, but then you would still have the retail development in the front that would, in essence, be a just a cannabis facility standalone.
Um, well, when the uh, when we, when we discovered that the assisted living project was not uh, financially viable, we went back to the drawing board and started to think through uh, alternative options of how we could activate that corner and um, turn that site from an old dilapidated bar and farm building into something more productive. Uh, something that would uh, would, would be a nice entrance to Western Cattati. As you all know, the development process for new projects takes quite some time. Uh, because we didn't know what we wanted to do, uh, we thought that, uh, and, and also given the fact that the cannabis permit was there, we thought that it would be a uh, a, a win-win for, for us, the owner and for the city to try and reactivate that corner, renovate those project, those buildings uh, and turn them into um, functioning, you know, usable space that benefits the city. They are existing buildings, they are there. Um, it is a commercial zoning district. And um, the current plan is to take the three existing structures and turn those into uh, three retail, commercial facilities. Uh, the center of which would house the uh, cannabis dispensary. Uh, I'm in active discussion with a uh, a local resident of Cattati who is interested in opening a cafe in that location. Uh, and uh, creating a cafe and donut bar. Um, we're incorporating some uh, outdoor seating areas uh, into our design to accommodate for uh, uh, that. Um, we're incorporating some, uh, outdoor seating areas, uh, into our design to accommodate for, uh, uh, that use. And we think that, um, providing, uh, more food and, um, uh, you know, kind of, uh, socialization activities, uh, in Western Catati in that location would, would, would be a, a, a great use, uh, for that location. I have some other comments that I can address, uh, about some other comments that the council members made, but if you have other questions and you'd like me to answer, then I'm available for that.
No, uh, go ahead and you can address those and then if I have further questions, I can always come back and then, um, we'll go from there.
Okay, um, so, uh, I think I've heard loud and clear the traffic is a large concern. Um, and in our, uh, design review, uh, response letter that we received from Mr. House, uh, that was, uh, a, a loud and clearly heard by us. Um, we have commissioned a traffic report from W Trans, who is the, uh, and traffic engineer of record, uh, on the project who we've used before and has helped us with other traffic analysis. They have, uh, conducted a traffic analysis of this project and, um, I have not yet submitted this to NOAA, but, um, I will be submitting it with our next, uh, application, or excuse me, my response to comments for the design review application. And, um, the current proposed project does generate less trips than the previously approved, uh, senior housing project, so it is a less impactful use on that site. We are going to be closing down all site access onto Highway 116, uh, in conformance with the city's general plan. Uh, there will be a new access, uh, point to the site, um, uh, uh, northward on Alder, uh, a hundred and fifty feet back from, from, uh, Highway 116, which is, uh, what's in the, uh, planning code of the city. And, uh, so we, we believe that this new use, um, will, 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 will be a, a safe, a safe use in that location. Uh, and, um, I, I will also add that we are, uh, going to be offering irrevocable offers of dedication to the city, uh, along the frontage of our property to accommodate future ha, widening of Highway 116, uh, that is a condition of approval associated with the villages project, which is, uh, which is, uh, immediately to the east of this, uh, location. Uh, moving on to, um, aesthetics, um, it was, uh, April of 2020, uh, that, uh, there was a fire reported at, uh, the old Reds Recovery Room, uh, bar location. Uh, by the time the fire department got there, they put the fire out, they left, it actually restarted, uh, and they had to come out a second time. And after that second fire, that building was substantially destroyed, uh, and was unable to be salvaged or repaired. Uh, we did demolish that building. And so, uh, a, a portion of that, uh, site has just been improved, I believe, by the removal of that, of that old structure. In regards to the existing structure as a part of our design review package, we will be installing, uh, new windows, uh, new siding, uh, we will be improving the site. Uh, we'll be, uh, adding, uh, sidewalks and pavement around, uh, around the buildings. Uh, we will be increasing the, uh, the, um, look of the building by adding, uh, a nice preliss elements. We'll have some outdoor seating available, uh, we'll be having bike parking, uh, we'll be landscaping the entire front end of that site and, um, really improving the look and feel of that corner. We know that those buildings, uh, have been there for quite some time and, um, over the years, we've had many interactions with the City of Catati Police Department and with Planning Department, uh, talking about vagrancy issues. So we believe that, um, the improvement of these buildings and turning them into active businesses, uh, will e, eliminate and attract nuisance and, um, uh, and hopefully provide, uh, you know, more services and opportunities for the citizens of West Catati to, uh, to benefit from. And I think the main concern was aesthetics and traffic, so, uh, those are my comments on those. If there's other questions that the council has, I'm available to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan. It never ceases to amaze me how many fires we have on properties that are gonna be soon to be developed in Catati. Just, it's, what a coincidence. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment at this point. Ms. Burgess, if you would like to direct that, I would be appreciative.
Adrian Lobby, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Well, this is actually Michelle Shelley Berman speaking and boy, you know, I, I haven't talked to you for a long time. It's, um, it's nice to be here on the one hand, and then here's Monahan Pacific. And I felt like, oh my God, OMG, Monahan Pacific. And what you just said, Mayor, about buildings being burned, I wouldn't be surprised that it was an inside job being Monahan Pacific. And I wouldn't trust a thing that Monahan Pacific is trying to sell you. And I am so grateful to hear council people say, it's not really right for the developer to tell me what to do. It's our job as city people to tell the developer what to do. And I think that Monahan Pacific owes Catati a park for the residents right there alongside Lowe's. I, I thought there was a park promise that's never been built. I, I really have a hard time with Monahan Pacific getting a plum, a, a plum cannabis permit. Uh, this is a plum. And I don't trust Monahan Pacific as far as I can throw them or burn them even. It's right to make them jump through your hoops, not the other way around. And I'm so grateful for, for my council people. I feel like I'm in really good hands. It's, I feel a lot different than 20 years ago. I'm so grateful to be in this town, to be, um, represented by you and, and I do feel like that you've got my best interest at heart. Traffic is important and making sure that we are safe no matter where we are is important. And I had an instance to be in that area and it is a bear trying to get off of Alder onto Old Redwood Highway. It's a bear trying to turn there and we need to be concerned about safety in that location. And I suspect that a cannabis facility would have a lot of traffic at any time. So I'm concerned about safety and I'm concerned about Monahan Pacific and grateful to be in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring this back to the council. Mr. House, what would be the, um, negative implications if we were to bring this back to the council at a future date versus this evening?
Well, I, I mean, there would be no negative implications from the processing standpoint, with the exception of just the staff time associated with bringing it back for council action. Uh, I guess from the applicant standpoint, which I would wanna speak to, speak for Mr. Monahan, but we, we did have some discussions on this. So he, again, as I mentioned, he's in a little bit of a chicken or the egg situation and, you know, development is often financed by lenders. And, um, the retail market right now is unbelievably challenged as we've talked about and has been talked about for, you know, multiple years prior to this, and then COVID has only exacerbated that. But there's not a lot of lending going on for any retail type construction. And so, um, every conversation that the city has had with folks about mixed use and about retail development, the developers are always pushing us to allow them to essentially subsidize the retail that the city is requiring with other features. So whether that's multiple housing units or additional housing units needed in a mixed use project to subsidize what they're considering as retail built, built on speculation, because there's not a lot of tenants who are signing up, uh, for leases ahead of construction. Or in this case, um, you know, the certainty that the developer would have with what they see as a financially, financially viable use to be able to operate from this location, to motivate them to continue with the project to, um, ultimately conclude construction and, and build out, uh, a project that is a retail use in the city. Uh, at least one retail use in the city with two retail shelves being available for occupancy. So, I mean, I guess that's the, the negative is that there's a potential that the, the uncertainty affects the developers kind of plans for, for moving forward with their project. And then the other concern, just, uh, from a land use perspective is, is assuming that we bring back the cannabis use with the design to the council. Our code doesn't allow those to be commingled. And so it would be very, staff would be trying to be very, um, clear in what the roles are for the city council and would likely look for some input with the city attorney to make sure that any action the council took on those would be clearly delineated, uh, based on the zoning criteria that we, we have regarding the use, the proposed renovation of the site, et cetera.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll just quickly comment on that to say that I, I don't think there's anything that would, excuse me, prevent the council from asking the planning commission to first act on the site development review. So you could see that before, uh, deciding, making a final determination on whether to extend this permit or not. At, at some point, Noah, is the permit going to be unrevivable? I mean, wha, what's keeping it sort of retaining the council's ability to extend it? Is it the, is it the COVID, um, uh, resolution?
Staff is looking at a combination of the COVID resolution, which granted extensions, and the adopted legal agreement, which gave the council and the applicant, uh, some certainty with the process, which is attached to the report.
Right. At some point, I'm gonna be concerned that, that there are other operators out there that would like to get a cannabis permit that, um, that this permit's remaining alive is preventing them from getting a permit. So, um, you know, once the COVID, uh, resolution expires, we're gonna, we're gonna need to make sure we take a look at whether or not this permit could, can be revived, I guess, for lack of a better terminology.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Uh, I, the, the one question I do have, um, from Mr. Monahan is, um, what, what's the percent of the buildings, of the original buildings there, uh, not counting Reds that is original? Is it one wall? Is it a quarter of a wall? Is it three studs in a corner?
Um, the, uh, previous buildings were, uh, not in great shape. Uh, we've rebuilt everything exactly where it was. Um, I don't know, I don't know the percentage of, uh, of, of new, uh, but, um, it's, it's, it's on the, uh, on, you know, seventy-five percent range.
Okay. Um, thank you very much. I don't really have any further questions at this point. I think that, uh, I would like to see something a little bit more significant on those building uses prior to us looking at anything like this. I would hate to see this look like a standalone dispensary and, and that's what it feels like. Uh, Councilman, uh, Ford?
Just wanna ask Director House about the, um, cannabis permits and where we're at with, uh, with our quotas for type 10 permits or? All right, i- is in fact this permit being held, keeping somebody else right now from getting one?
Uh, we only allow two cannabis retail dispensaries to operate. And so one is, one is Mr. Monahan's and one is Mercy. That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Vice Mayor Lemon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think we all know it's not unusual at planning, certainly. Sometimes we have situations, usually in a much smaller scale where work is done, a project is done and completed, uh, without taking out permits. With kind of the hope that doing that will avoid perhaps the cost of doing it right and they would not be forced because of that cost to remedy any problems later. Kind of do it now and beg for forgiveness later. And I, and I have, it's not exactly the same thing, but I have a little bit of that feeling with this. The renovations of those buildings, exactly, essentially exactly as they were, only just meeting modern code, isn't what we were originally looking at. And I fear that, I understand keeping costs low and I'm supportive of that, but at the same time, I fear that by doing it this way, obviously, we're doing it as cheaply as possible. But I fear that's gonna be reflected in the final result and the final projects. I wanna see value for the permit we have. We have substantial value, I felt before. I completely understand the problem with the lending situation, uh, particularly in terms of the previous plan. Uh, that's certainly not Mr. Monahan's problem. Uh, that's something that occurred, but it, it's not our issue either. Uh, I wanna see us get value for that permit. I'd like to see, uh, something closer to a final plan that shows perhaps tenants, potential tenants, that shows uses, it shows what it's gonna look like and how traffic will work and where the value is for the community beyond just a couple of extra very small roadside, uh, potential business locations. Maybe it's not a whole park, but I have to admit I smiled when I heard of that. We have to think of that whole area in the future. We have to think of the neighborhood and, uh, I'd be just as happy if we can put this on the table. I recognize we'll lose revenue for the city and I recognize that'll lose revenue for Mr. Monahan. But beyond our mutual interest, we have to think long-term of the community and I'd be happier to wait to do it right myself. So I just wanted to share that. So I, I'd like to see, I agree with the mayor. I'd like to see if there's any consensus, perhaps senior staff and the Monahan folks can come up with something that has some more meat on the bones and have one last look at this and perhaps it's something we can live with and perhaps it won't be. But, uh, as it is tonight, I'm not sure I can, I can live with it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. I'm going to, um, speak to Mr. Monahan or let him speak for a moment. Uh, Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Harvey, and then we'll come right back to you if I, if I may. Mr. Monahan, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Um, yeah, I, I just wanna reiterate that, um, that, you know, developing, uh, real estate in general is a, uh, a, a very difficult endeavor. Uh, developing real estate in the midst of COVID, uh, is extremely, extremely challenging. You know, our goal is to, is to activate that site, create a beautiful set of buildings, uh, have something that's gonna look nice for the city of Catati. Uh, it's not a, it's, it's three, it's three separate, uh, spaces. Like I said, we're in discussions with a, a, a local Catati resident that's interested in opening a cafe. This site has long sat idle and, um, in the current environment, uh, we, we believe that this is a, a, a good use for the project. This is a, an activation of that corner. This is a turning away from, uh, something that's been an attractive nuisance. And, um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, that you can share that vision with me tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ford?
Thanks, Mayor Moore. Um, I, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Lemon and, uh, even more, I'm not clear that, uh, even a very pretty picture of what those three buildings is gonna look like is gonna be value enough for the city for this final retail cannabis permit. I think that the, um, I, I gotta say, my, my feeling of, of what's happening feels a lot like bait and switch. We, uh, the fact that those, those other assisted living places were built in Ronard Park was known before final approvals were given in 2019.
And, uh, the applicant could have known at that point that there were no, that there was no financing available for, um, assisted living. And so to, to put together a, a very nice development proposal for the whole site as part of which you're granted a cannabis permit. Great. And then take away pretty much all of the beneficial aspects of the development to try to keep the cannabis permit. Doesn't sit right with me. I was not on the council at the time, so I'm, I'm not as intimately familiar with what the conversations were at that point. Kattati, uh, I don't know if you've looked at retail vacancy rates in Kattati, but it's, it's, um, there are not people knocking down doors to rent retail space right now. A strip mall with parking on the frontage, uh, is not my, my vision for what, uh, what we turn that whole strip into. And if, if this is built as retail now, it's not going away anytime soon. So we're sort of cementing that as the model for what happens along that strip of 116. The, the final piece that I want to mention is a concern I have about the way this is structured as a resolution, which gives control of future extensions to, to the city manager and takes it away from the council. And that didn't come up in the presentation, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to protest that, uh, at this point. Because I think there, there are places where the elected body needs to, needs to maintain that authority and not hand it off to staff. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Uh, Councilmember Harvey?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm still struggling, um, with this. I, I, parts of me, um, we, we went through a great deal of discussion when we approved the last plan. I mean, we talked about moving parking spaces and we talked about, you know, the noise on the road. And, and you know, how do we create spaces for people to sit so that they can enjoy that? You know, we, we moved some things around in order to make all that happen. And now I feel like, well, we decided something else and we decided this is what it's going to look like. And we just, you know, a- and I don't feel like we know what we're getting. It sounds nice, but without seeing it and understanding. So, you know, there's discussion around, well, there's going to be a cafe and there's going to be outside seating. Well, where is that outside seating? Is that outside seating sitting on 116? Well, I can't imagine that that would be a very pleasant place to be sitting and enjoying a meal. Sitting right on highway 116 with, with cars zooming by at sixty miles an hour. So there's, there's things like that, 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 um, the words sound nice, but I, I, I can't see it. The other issue that I'm having, while I understand what you're saying that, that there isn't financing. I have had to deal with assisted living and finding places and things like that. And I am only aware of one new assisted and memory care facility that was built in Warner Park. It's, um, just off the expressway. And so while there is another facility in Warner Park, it is very old. Um, but only one that I'm aware of. There are, um, senior apartment buildings that have been built, but that's a, that's a very different thing. So, so that kind of bothered me a bit since I've been in the market a lot. Um, having had to, um, deal with my mother-in-law and having her in those facilities. I'm not aware that there are three brand new places in Warner Park. Um, so that, that kind of disturbs me, um, a little bit. Um, but I, I really feel like we need to see what it is that, that we're getting, um, before we kind of release this. I think there was some question around, you know, the value of this permit. I know one of the things that we have struggled with, um, is that it has to be in a certain area. And, and I, and I think that there's an assumption that, that, oh, well, this is the only spot within that area. And, and I think that, that is tending to, um, push us in a certain way as if this is the only spot. As was pointed out, you know, there might be others that have some other ideas of what they could do, even though it is, you know, a little bit more limited. So I would really like to see more work done on this. And I, you know, if there's a vision, I would like to see that vision. I don't want to hear about it. I want to see it. Um, and I, and I want to know that this is what I'm agreeing to, not, you know, some pie in the sky thing. Because we've had multiple things come before us on this site. And, and, um, you know, I want to see what's really going to happen, someone's ideas. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. So based on what I'm hearing from the fellow councilmembers for the most part, it, it seems as if we're not necessarily overly thrilled with this particular request. So I think there might be a couple of different directions. We could, um, deny the extension. We could, um, extend it for a shorter period of time, two or three months to see something, see what comes back. Um, or if, you know, I'm open to any other particular suggestions.
Um, I, I'll just add that based on the conversation tonight, I, it sounds like the, um, consensus is around just, um, no action tonight and postponing the decision. And, um, basically, uh, potentially coming back at some point, maybe closer to design review approval, um, or sooner potentially with, um, uh, with more information to help address, or at least help answer the question. So you have more information before you.
I, I would be okay with that. It seems like the consensus on the council certainly is not, uh, going forward in this particular approach. So if we want to, um, table that or, or delay it till another times. Um, I think Mr. Monahan has gotten an idea of what we are concerned with. And, um, and hopefully something will come back, um, in a more positive light. So with that, if there's no action on this, then we don't necessarily need a vote on that. Or do we need a vote on the no action?
Noah, do you think it would be useful to have, uh, the council take an action to continue the request? So it's clear that, that the permit is still alive?
But yeah, I, I do think it would, the best potion, motion based on what I'm hearing would be for the council to vote to continue the item to a date uncertain. So that gives flexibility for the applicant, uh, to kind of digest what he's heard, obviously staff also. Uh, and then, um, it's my understanding that there's going to be a resubmit on the design review application in a very, very short period of time. So then a lot of these questions will have been answered with that. And we could then true those up with bringing the council more of that information to, uh, support whatever action they'd like to take after they have that.
My concern under Mr. House is the term uncertain.
Uh, if the council desired, one approach might be to, um, ask, uh, that the IMB brought back after the planning commission takes action on the site development review approval. And that, that might be, uh, an appropriate response. I'm just worried about a scenario where the SDR never comes forward. Um, and, and then we have this sort of continued permit. So at some point staff will have to bring it back to, to ask you to take a final action to, uh, reject the request.
Yeah, I would just say, under the current agreement, uh, if the applicant were to essentially, um, not move forward with the project, given the uncertainty with not having an approved permit. Then even if that wasn't communicated directly to staff, at some point in the relatively near future, staff will bring that to the council for formal denial under the terms of that agreement.
Uh, Vice Mayor Lemon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would be comfortable with a very short continuance to a date uncertain. But I'm not sure if going through a preliminary, uh, work with the planning commission. Obviously that's more time and money. My concern is, I thought most of us expressed pretty clearly. We weren't seeing the value in this project that was there before. Uh, that was a problem. But when the developer responded back, I felt like you weren't hearing us. You talked about discussing us accepting what was being put forward, that this was a great benefit, the three storefronts for Kattati. Um, and I, I, I know for me personally, that's not the case. I suspect maybe for my colleagues listening to the discussion, that's not the case either. So I want to be real clear out there. I'm, if you can come back in a relatively short amount of time with something that has some teeth in it that we can plan on. And it actually has value for this community beyond what's currently out there. I'm completely open and willing to work with you personally in any way I can. But without that, I, I, I think it wouldn't be a good use of time. So I just wanted to share that. At any rate, I'd be happy to move a, a, a short continuance to a date uncertain. If the rest of my colleagues would like to do that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. I have, uh, um, uh, hand raised by, uh, Councilmember Ford.
Well, I was just going to try to, to frame something along the lines of what Vice Mayor Lemon was saying. I'm, I'm not sure how we say short, but date uncertain. So I would like to say something like, you know, it's got to come back, um, within a month after the planning commission approval or within four months, whichever is sooner, whichever of those two things happens first.
Let me ask Mr. House or Mr. Obit, if I might, through the mayor, uh, and Mr. Ford, thank you. If they could recommend a short timeframe that would be adequate for the key parties here, uh, the Monahan group and staff to get together. And see if they can bring forward something that will meet the stated interests of the council. What are we looking at here? Wha- what would be appropriate? Knowing that our interest is not dragging this out terribly long.
I, I will say, Vice Mayor Lemon, the stated interest of the council is less than clear to me at this point. Um, with regards, I'm, I'm hearing some, some indications that redevelopment of the site completely is is essentially needed in order for an approval to be granted. And then I'm also hearing, um, a, a project needs to demonstrate overall benefits in order to be, and, and receive, you know, support from a, a design standpoint in order to be supported as a location for the cannabis. So that's a little bit of a struggle for me, a little bit less than clear.
I would suggest that that suggestion of seeing some overall benefit beyond what's certainly in this, and I won't even call it a proposal, what you brought us tonight. And the concept of completely redoing this are closer together. Uh, one might be an extreme, but essentially the direction you're hearing is what's being offered. I don't, I'm not hearing is being welcomed. Uh, so that's, that's the range we're looking at. A suggestion of something beyond what's being offered that brings real value up to, if necessary, our complete willingness, or at least in my perspective, my complete willingness to wait and do this right at a better time and, and develop this property in a way that's long-term, more beneficial.
Yeah, so.
I apologize, it's difficult, but you know, we weren't given much to work with tonight. So it puts us in a difficult position to give you much to work with.
Completely understand that. And I, I do think a presentation of the project that the applicant is proposing with the zoning and general plan context that show we want retail facilities in this location. We want them to front onto 116. We want commercial presence. We do not want parking in front of the buildings. All these things which the project design does show, albeit you have not, you don't have the benefit of seeing that, completely understood. I think giving a continuance of ninety days from today would allow the applicant enough time and staff enough time to, um, the applicant to resubmit on their design reviews, staff to evaluate that per the zoning criteria, uh, and come forward. One point that I do want to make is, um, the city council, you know, a year and a half ago, undertook a complete revision of the zoning code, eliminating a lot of the requirements for use permits. So I, I just want to remind folks that, um, now when developers come to the city, we show them a list of uses that they can put into certain facilities in these districts by right. They don't need to go into the city for approval for a bakery with outdoor seating as an example. And so, uh, it's just a different way of doing business that the council may be used to. Uh, where previously a lot of individual uses would have to come all the way through the city council. Which means a lot of developers are doing a lot more legwork with folks upfront before they come talk to council. And so this will be kind of a theme if we get more of this kind of speculative commercial development that we will not have the specific uses identified yet. So I just wanted to touch on that because it's an important point, uh, that I think is just part of the, the future of how commercial tendencies are going to work in Kattati.
Well, too, I, I hear you, and I think the last comment I'd make in that is that, first of all, I agree. I think the value in doing the legwork upfront was necessary and that might be a good thing to do to a larger degree in the future. And secondarily, you know, I think I've said this over and over, um, I, I'm going to just leave my comments at this, just, I, I, I hope it's clear that we're not seeing anything approaching what we originally had. And if this puts us in a position, I'm loathe, and I would think most of us would be loathe it. We have no control in the future in terms of what comes before us, which was fine to try and help developments go forward. I'm fine with that, but the, the one piece of leverage we have is this permit. And that makes me all the more reticent to give it up just on the hope that something of value develops. So I'll leave you with that thought and we'll see what comes back in the future. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ford?
Uh, I lowered my hand because, uh, Vice Mayor Lemon said, but I will, uh, go ahead and move that we continue this, uh, uh, proposed resolution for our period not to exceed ninety days.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue this application approval for ninety days from 12621?
That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, we have motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Burgess, if you would take a vocal?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Um, thank you very much. Mr. House, I had a question. When you talk about by right and down the road, we may not have a lot of discretion in some of these things. Um, if we, if it were to include, uh, dispensing a cannabis, we would still have that right to review that, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. I just, I was more speaking to the, the two retail sites that would be vacant when we bring the project back before the council. It, the, the developer may not have a lease signed for those sites at that time. Uh, and we're likely to see that as we get more of these mixed use developments where there's a lot of housing and some commercial components. They may not, we may not know the uses associated with those at that time when the developments are coming forward.
Right, but if, but if this ends up being the, just the secondary dispensary, then we don't have that concern.
Absolutely, absolutely correct.
Thank you. Okay. Um, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Monahan, and thank you Noah for the work on that. I appreciate it. Um, our next agenda item is, um, 11C. I have a feeling this is going to be an involved conversation. So I would like to take a five-minute bio break and then come back. Uh, so it's nine thirty-two, let's say, uh, nine forty. Thank you very much for your indulgence. We'll see you in just a minute. You can stay logged in, just, uh, if you want, mute and shut off your video if you so desire. Thank you all for your indulgence. If we have anyone present, we can go ahead and restart at, uh, 9:40. Um, I have a feeling that we will go beyond 10. So if anyone would like to make a motion that we extend the meeting beyond 10, now might be a good opportunity for that.
So moved. This is Councilmember Harvey. Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. If we could get a roll call, Ms. Burgess.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. So now we'll move on to item 11C of the regular agenda. I believe Mr. Obit, you're going to start us off with that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, um, just real briefly, um, let's do a quick introduction and then we have, um. Miranda Everett and Kurt Ballou here from FM3 who are going to actually do the presentation. But, um, as way of background, in the fall of 2020, the city council authorized. Um, a poll on racial bias in Katati, in addition to providing direction on various other efforts currently underway, as is indicated in the staff report. The survey was conducted by FM3, a firm that specializes in polling, and fieldwork was performed, uh, November 14th through 24th of 2020. So, um. Lauren, if you could load the PowerPoint, please. Um, and once we get that loaded up, then, um. Kurt or Miranda, I don't know who's, would you lead the presentation? But, uh. Hand it off to you.
Hi, so I'll lead the presentation. My name's Miranda Everett. I'm a vice president at FM3 Research and my colleague Kurt Ballow is on the line as well, um, with my. Um, login issues, I suppose. Um, so we are here to present the results of the, uh, public safety, safety and policing survey that we conducted. Uh, right before Thanksgiving or so, uh, in November 2020. Um, so the next slide would be great. So starting with the methodology, um, our approach here was to, uh, select, uh, adults with. Um. Select, uh, adults within a household with a registered voter. And, uh, we were able to speak to 354 residents of Katati. Um, this sample was, uh, designed to be representative of, uh, the demographic and, uh. Uh, qualities of adults in the city overall. The reason we use the voter, uh, household as the kind of sample unit. Uh, is just, uh, the trade-off for cost effectiveness in a city like Katati where, um, there are about just under 6,000, uh, adults. According to the census and about 5,000 registered voters, uh, we felt like that could give us a substantial amount of coverage in the city, um, without. Another 30 to 40% uh, increase in cost. So that, that's kind of the approach we took this year. In prior surveys, we have some comparisons to prior years. Those were more often voter surveys. So we were actually trying to speak to a specific registered voter. And the interest in those surveys was to, um, deal with something having to do with an upcoming election. Here we wanted a broader sample. And so we have a sample that is. More reflective of, of adults generally. So it tends to be a bit younger. It's more diverse in terms of race and ethnicity. Um, and there are more renters and, and folks like that who haven't been kind of, uh, reliably voting for, for years and, and weighing in on different ballot measures. So this was conducted online and by phone, um, and in English and Spanish. Uh, so folks had a number of different ways to, uh, complete the study. And so the more, our overall margin of sampling error that we have on results is about 5%. I'm going to show you a lot of top-line results that re- represent the community overall. And then we have a section a little bit later on where we dive into the demographics. There, the margin of error subgroup for the subgroups is, is larger, um, just kind of a function of the, the population size for each, you know, as you move inward. And so I'll have a slide to kind of talk about the bigger, uh, confidence interval we have around those, uh, uh, results when we get to that portion of the presentation. So starting kind of big picture with some, um, overall results on the next slide. Uh, yes. So here's, here's some more detail about the respondent demographics. So as I mentioned, the sample was designed to reflect U.S. Census data for adults in Katati. Um, and you can see, uh, that big table there on the right, uh, that survey respondents, uh, look like adults in the city overall. Um, if response rates were slightly higher for any particular group, often college-educated residents are more responsive to surveys, uh, we weighted it to reflect the census results. So, um. We took several steps to make sure that the results you see actually represent, uh, the demographics in the population. Uh, next slide, please. So for kind of overall key findings, just some, some numbers to orient the discussion, and then we'll get into a lot more detail in, in future slides. 86% said they felt safe in Katati generally. Um, 75% said they approve of the Katati Police Department. 18%, um, as, as one commenter has, has pointed out earlier in, in tonight's meeting, um, observed racism in Katati frequently or occasionally. Um, and 63% characterized the relationship between the Katati residents and the police department as a positive one. So we'll get into a lot more detail in the future, but just kind of some big picture findings here. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so I'll start with some community context, some big picture questions that we asked, um, based on some, some, uh. You know, wanting to get a sense of the pulse of the community on the next slide. Um, classic pollster question, right direction or wrong track. Um, here we asked folks to tell us which one. Um, 64% told us that things are headed in the right direction in the city. Uh, 26% said some mix or they don't know, and just 10% said things are headed in the wrong track. Now, that 64% is a tad lower than it was in March of 2020 or even in 2019. Um, but I would say, given everything that's happened, uh, since then. To have this many folks feeling just generally positive about the direction of the city is a kind of, uh, a good baseline. And, you know, there's lots of. Cities where we ask the same question, the results are completely flipped. So kind of an, an optimistic, um. Starting point when, when folks kind of zero in on the life in the city specifically. Uh, next slide, please. Great. Uh, next is a quality of life question. How would you rate the city as a place to live? 86% said either excellent or good. Now, most of those folks are in the good category, 53%, um, but one-third go all the way up to excellent, uh, in registering their opinion. And, uh, very few, vanishingly few, just 1% say poor. So, um, a lot of positivity generally, uh, in quality of life. The fact that it's not. As enthusiastic, um, is pretty common as well. Um, but, you know, 86% saying excellent or good quality of life, just based on other places we see, especially in the Bay Area and along the West Coast is a really. Um, uh, outstanding number, something to be proud of. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So next we asked for, uh, folks to tell us whether they approve or disapprove, uh, various departments in the city of Katati. And this is based on a question we had asked in prior years. Um, in voter surveys, and I'll show you some comparisons over time, um, to just kind of get a benchmark of how people feel about city government overall. Here, 72% approve. 21% strongly approve and about half somewhat approve. Um, and then specific departments, so the police department, um, 75% approval rating. Um, the recreation department, 70% approval rating, public works, 74%. Um, so lots of stuff in the same ballpark here, around 70% or a little bit higher for the approval ratings. Now notably two places where there's some differences that are a little more significant. Um, one is planning and building where 57% approve. Um, part of that is driven, and this is common, um, by 29% saying they don't know either way. So if you haven't applied for a planning, uh, permit or, or dealt with the department, which I'm sure is true for lots of folks. Um, especially in the last year, then you might honestly say you don't know either way. Uh, but the disapproval ratings for that department and for the police department are, um, higher than for anything else. So 15% disapprove of the police department and 14% of the planning and building departments. Um, those, you know, that, that is a, a number we'll kind of keep coming back to around 14, 15%. Um, having some kind of, uh, more negative, uh, interaction or view of, uh, the police department in general. Um, but I think this is the first place we see it in the survey. Um, and we can see it's, it's a little bit of an outlier from other departments, although that, that share who approve is, um, the highest overall of, of any department, same as. Public Works essentially statistically. Um, next slide, please. Yeah, so this shows the change over time. Um, approval ratings kind of statistically no different for public work, city council, planning department. Um, city government overall has eroded just a tad, police department has eroded just a tad, and recreation department's, uh, approval rating has gone down 9%. Um, and, you know, we have kind of different theories about why that might be. Um, but I think the kind of central finding is that the, those kind of core functions of governments. Um, broadly, uh, haven't changed much over the last year or two. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so another way to look at kind of issues of concern in the community is to give people a list of problems. Um, and ask them to tell us how serious is that problem for Katati. Um, the scale we use here is extremely serious, very somewhat or not too serious a problem. You can see they're ranked by the extremely and very combined with the dark red bar showing extremely serious, the things that are of the most pressing concern. Um, now, first thing I'll say is I do lots of surveys in communities where the things at the top of the list are at 70%, 80%, things like that. So to see that your very highest notched ones at 52, 53%. Shows that overall, at least of the questions we asked here, um, levels of concern are not, not as broad as and, and intense, um, as we see in some other places, especially on some similar issues too. Um, crime, for example, all the way at the bottom, 15% calling that an extremely or very serious problem in Katati. Um, number of police on duty, also something that's not a big concern, although you'll see 23% don't know enough to say. Um, police use of force. 21% calling that extremely or very serious, 42% saying, uh, not too serious a problem, 21% saying they don't know either way. Um. So those are the ones kind of lower down on the list, along with local traffic congestion. Um, racial discrimination and prejudice in Katati, that's kind of central to tonight's discussion. 25% called that an extremely very serious problem in the city. Uh, fully 20% say they don't know. Um, so again, you have some folks who may say, well, I haven't noticed it, but maybe as somebody who's. Uh, you know, white or white passing, like I, I couldn't say either way. So we, we start to see, um, some, some nuance in, in people's impressions, um, when you ask them to speak to their own personal experience. At the very top of the list, though, issues like climate change and housing affordability, that's a big issue throughout the Bay Area and the West Coast. Um, those are at the top of the list for the city. Next tier down is risk of wildfire. Um, even in November, I think that was pretty top of mind for folks. Um, and then the condition of the local economy. Um, that's, you know, 41%. Um, so that's kind of in the second tier. Uh, next slide, please. So again, we have some comparisons to prior years, uh, again, looking at voters, slightly different population, but overall we see really, um, an intense, uh, jump. In the number of people who consider the condition of the local economy an extremely very serious problem. It's perhaps not a surprise with, um, all the kind of uncertainty that's been happening kind of at the national level and state and even local. Um, crime has also increased as a, uh, concern and that often. Crime has also increased as a concern, and that often moves in tandem. Crime in the economy, concern about those come together sometimes. And then statistically, no real difference with potholes, availability of housing for families or traffic congestion. If they were a big problem in the past, they're relatively a big problem still. Next slide, please. So for broader context, and we placed this question at the, near the end of the survey, because we didn't want it to kind of color people's impressions of what the survey would be about or things like that. But we asked them, just in general, do you approve or disapprove of police officers? You know, knowing that there's been a lot, a lot of conversation about police and their kind of role in communities and things like that. We wanted a kind of cross tab to look at who are the folks who are kind of thinking more critically about that? And then who are the ones who are just generally kind of coming from a place of like feeling positive about it? So overall, 82% say they approve of police officers in general in the city of Khatati. 41% strongly approve, same share, 41% are in that somewhat category. And then 14% disapprove of police officers in general. Next slide, please. So one of the key numbers here was about observations of racism in Khatati. We asked a few questions that got to those experiences and observations more specifically. And on the next slide, I can start showing you some numbers of what we learned. So here's where we see two questions here, and we kind of put a time bound around it, within the last five years or so. Have you experienced, personally experienced racism in Khatati? 19% said they had, at least sometimes. Just 1% said frequently, 6% said occasionally. But 79% said they never have. And then on the right, the question is whether you have observed racism in Khatati, and that's a much more common experience. 43% say they have at some point or another. 4% say they frequently have, and I think, you know, that makes sense. It's much more common to kind of see something happening than to have it happen to you specifically. Lots of people can observe one event happening at the same time, you know, things like that. So I think here we see that the observation is much more common than the direct experience in this town. Next slide, please. And then one question we wanted to get specifically at interactions with city employees or city services. Have you experienced or observed racism involving a city service employee? And here we saw 8% said yes, but 89%, about nine in 10, say they did not. So that 8%, if we do the math, that's 28 people. And then we asked them to tell us in a few words of their own, a little bit more about kind of what, who that experience was, what department it was. 20 of those 28 said it was an issue with the police department or a police officer. And the rest described an experience kind of not involving city employees. So they mentioned something they saw at a cafe or a restaurant or a grocery store, something like that, that they kind of didn't have to do with the city, even though the question was about that. Or they, you know, declined to give further details. Next slide, please. And then among those who speak a language other than English at home, so the survey was offered in English and Spanish. But of everybody in both languages, we asked, do you speak a language other than English at home, knowing that the person who answered the phone may be bilingual or trilingual or more? And here, that was 57 of the folks. And then of those, we asked whether they had experienced a language barrier that prevented them from participating in city meetings. And 3% said yes, they had. Overall, almost everybody, 97% said they had not. So we have a little bit more information about that. Next slide, please. So bulk of the survey really had to do with people's experiences with policing, not just their attitudes about it, but kind of the kind of experiences they've had and their impressions of policing in Khatati and public safety. And I can get into that on the next slide. So first, we asked whether they had personally had one of these experiences or someone in their household had in the last five years. So those green bars are yourself, your household member, both. And then the red bars are neither. And then there's a share in gray who either said, I don't know, or would rather not answer the question. So essentially, three in five have interacted with a Khatati police officer in the last five years or in a household with someone who has. That was the most common experience. It's the broadest one, so that makes a lot of sense. Reporting a crime and being stopped by police, 31% for each of those said that that had happened to them or someone in their households. Feeling uncomfortable calling Khatati police, 10% said they or someone in their household fit that category. 83% said that was not the case for them or someone in their household. And then been arrested or filed a complaint, those are the least common experiences, 4% and 2% relatively. Next slide, please. Respectively, that's the word I meant. So of the people who had had any kind of interaction with a Khatati police officer, which we saw on the last slide was kind of that largest, broadest category. But still, we're narrowing down our overall sample of 354 people to now 139, only asking those who said, yes, I've interacted with a police officer. How are you satisfied with the experience? Satisfied, dissatisfied? 78% were satisfied, 47% were very satisfied. The total dissatisfied was 17%. Now, most of those were in the somewhat category. But notable, 7% of those 139 folks were not satisfied with their interaction. But overall, again, nearly four in five said they're at least somewhat satisfied with the experience they had. Next slide, please. So here, of everybody who is satisfied and not satisfied, we asked them to tell us a little bit more about why. And here, we're showing the N sizes, which is the number of people, not the percentages, because we just don't want to kind of, the math gets a little tricky when we're looking at just 109 people. And we don't want to say, you know, overstate it too much, and that comes into play a little bit more with the smaller subsamples. But here, again, as we noted, the majority of folks were satisfied. And those who were satisfied said the officer was polite, was respectful, was friendly, professional, or just simply had a quick response, investigated their concerns, investigated the situation. Most folks were describing an experience of kind of a friendly, professional experience where they kind of had their expectations met. And those were the folks who were satisfied with their interactions. And the next slide has a little more detail about the folks who were dissatisfied. Now, this is 23 people, because we're doing a slice of a slice of a slice. But here, again, kind of on the flip side of the coin, the people who are dissatisfied talked about the officer's attitude. So rather than having an experience that was friendly, they had one that was rude. Some folks admitted they had an unpleasant experience because their issue wasn't resolved or they felt that they hadn't done anything wrong, kind of were stopped or interacted with for a reason that didn't feel justified to them. And so for the most part, on either side of the coin, it was really about kind of the attitude or demeanor that the officer had. Next slide. So there were a number of folks who were uncomfortable calling the police, either them or someone in their household. Again, we're doing a slice of a slice. So this is 36 people. But we asked those people to tell us a little bit more about why they were uncomfortable, because we wanted to identify if those were reasons that potentially the city could address. And so some people, kind of the bulk of that 36, told us they're just not comfortable with it. And, you know, they didn't explain too much more about why, they kind of felt like also maybe uncomfortable with the question. But the other most common response was that they had had a prior negative interaction. And then another fairly common response that we saw was that someone involved in the incident was black or the person themselves was black, and that was kind of their rationale. Or that they thought it wouldn't resolve the issue. Now, you'll note these add up to more than 36, and in some cases, people gave a little more context and mentioned more than one of these rationales for their response. And that's true of all the open-ended questions, people could offer more than one reason. Next slide, please. So next, we had some questions about public safety and policing more broadly. This is where we get into people's kind of sense of safety divorced from the concept of specifically police. And then some more details. So I'll start with the next slide. So majorities reported feeling safe generally, and in parks, and in driving, and in walking in Khatati. 80% or higher on all these figures here. We also asked the question, do you feel safe interacting with Khatati police? 72% said yes, they do. 45% said they feel very safe doing so. 8% said they feel unsafe. Statistically, not too different, but I think consistent with results we see in other places in the survey. It's something that might deserve a little more scrutiny or attention. So next slide, please. Those with safety concerns. You know, anybody who said they felt unsafe in Khatati, we asked them a little bit about why and what would you, what would make you feel more safe? Lots of people had of, you know, of the 52 people who, again, sample of a sample, who had a concern that they felt could be addressed around safety, said something to do with traffic. So the way drivers behave, the way pedestrians behave, you know, ways we could address infrastructure or attitudes or something like that was kind of the chief reason there with 16 people. 15 people said they wanted to see more police or feel more protected by the police in some way. Wanted to feel their presence more, see more patrols, something like that. And then kind of further down the list, we have things like less discrimination. In some cases, that was about police, but, you know, with the seven responses, that wasn't the total theme. Some of that had to do with just generally from other residents in Khatati. Better or more lighting, people talking about feeling safer in parks and the streets if there was better or more lighting. And then six people specifically said that police made them feel uncomfortable. And then the rest are kind of a smattering of other reasons and folks who declined to answer the question. So again, of those 52 folks, a lot had to do with pedestrian and driver safety and with more police patrols that would make them feel safer. Next slide, please. So next, we gave them a battery of different police services or aspects of police services. And we asked people to tell us, how satisfied are you with the job being done by police on that score? And here we see that we kind of put a dash line there for the ones that 70% or more are satisfied with. Maintaining traffic safety, being courteous to the public, and maintaining adequate neighborhood patrol. 70% or more are satisfied with that. Although we do see one in 10 or a shade more are dissatisfied with those ones. But then, as we move down the list, we see that don't know bar in gray get a little bit bigger. And then again, that might just be folks who are just being honest, that they don't have direct experience with this. So timeliness of response to police calls, if you haven't called, you don't know. But a majority are satisfied with that. 911 operators being courteous, again, if you haven't called 911, you don't know. But 52% are satisfied with that. Addressing crime against peoples, the kind of violent crime, potentially 48% satisfied with that. 47% satisfied with property crime and the way that's addressed. And then further down in the list, places where we start to see that that number who aren't sure grow even more is treating people fairly regardless of their race or ethnicity, whether they're homeless, and working with people experiencing a mental health crisis. So there, the kind of gap between satisfied and dissatisfied narrows a bit, but kind of the plurality in either case is folks who say they don't know either way. Next slide, please. So an exercise we did here is to remove the people who said they don't know. As a kind of way of saying, okay, of the people who know enough to say either way, what are the numbers we're getting? And here we see satisfaction levels are higher, which makes sense. When you kind of delete the folks who don't know, we start to see 70% and higher across all these numbers. And essentially, the ranking of things is pretty similar. The things that are at the bottom where there are greater shares dissatisfied have to, again, to do with kind of vulnerable populations. But things like courtesy and timeliness and kind of addressing crime, those are things that folks are really broadly satisfied with. Next slide, please. So folks were asked about their opinion of the relationship between people in the city and the police. And then we asked them, has that gotten better or worse in the last five years? For the most part, people said that stayed the same or they don't know. 80% when you look at that together in that neutral zone. 14% believe it's gotten better and 6% say it's gotten worse in the last five years. So overall, half has said no change. The most common response overall is no change or don't know on this question. Next slide, please. And then the question that preceded this was whether they believe that the relationship between Khatati police and residents is generally positive or negative. Here, we saw nearly two thirds of residents believe police in Khatati have a positive relationship with their residents. And then three in 10 feel it's mixed or they don't know. And then fewer than one in 10 say it's a negative one. Next slide, please. So those of positive views of Khatati police, we asked them a little bit more about why. That was 224 people in our sample. And then they kind of just said, well, I haven't heard any complaints, so must be a good one. That was the most common response. But also just as common as something a little more specific, saying they were responsive or they communicated well. They had a personal experience that they liked, again, talking about being friendly and fair. Those are kind of the reasons people say that relationship is positive when we ask them for more detail. Next slide, please. So among those who said that's kind of a mixed relationship, that was just 52 people from the samples, because again, we're going down subsample here. The ones who said it's a mixed relationship says it depends on the officer, that was the most common response. But the second most common response was overall was it depends on your race. So, you know, that kind of recognition that it could vary, and they're not answering maybe necessarily from their own position, but thinking of potential other positions. And then there was kind of a smattering of other responses as well. Next slide, please. So there was another group, the 28 people who had a negative view of that relationship. For the most part, those ones talked about racial profiling or harassment issues. And then again, issues having to do with demeanor, so saying the officer that they dealt with was arrogant or just a general sense that police need more better training. And people had kind of a variety of specific types of training they would like their officer to get. Next slide, please. Okay, so as noted, here, I'm going to get into a little bit of the demographics. We've been showing you lots of the statistics for the city overall, but here are some differences by the key demographics. Next slide, please. So given the small size of Khatati, we are somewhat limited in the conclusions we can draw by specific subgroups. So the pattern across similar questions, we think, is more informative than individual percentages. The consistency of some of the numbers we're seeing, even if the percentages don't line up apples to apples, it's kind of tells a story overall that we think makes sense within the survey and within the broader context. So here, we, in the next few slides, we kind of talk about race and ethnicity. That's really a key factor in this, in the real world. So we'll note here on the left that the N size, the size, the number of people we spoke to who identified to us that they are white, was 280. So that gives us a margin of error for that subsample of 6%. It's the most numerous group in the city. Latino, that was 35 people who identified that way. The margin of error there is much larger as a result, it's 18%. So we also look at residents of color, so that includes Latino residents, but also people who identified as African American or Black, Asian Pacific Islander, multiracial, and anything besides white or refusing to give the answer. Notably, there were a good number of people, and this is quite common, who declined to share what their race was, and we didn't include them in this analysis. We don't know enough about them to kind of say which bucket they fit into. You know, and as noted here, it's really important to stress that we present residents of color kind of as a, as a way of demonstrating key difference in the survey. It's very common and intuitive that it's not a monolithic set of opinions that might be held between folks who are Native American, African American, Latino, or Asian. It's just a way of kind of shrinking that margin of error just a little bit so we can look at differences where they appear in these questions, especially in a city with the demographics like Khatati. So next slide, please. So here are lots of numbers on this slide, but the big takeaway here is that residents of color were more likely to feel concerned about the economy. The very top of the list there, we see 39% of white residents call the economy an extremely very serious problem, just 11% calling it an extremely serious problem. But among residents of color, that number has doubled. 22% of them called that an extremely serious problem. So that's really at the top of the list for those folks. And then issues like potholes and road maintenance, that's something that's more concerning to residents of color than white residents. And on the question of racial discrimination and prejudice, this was another one where we saw a significant difference. And that's really driven by white residents, fully a quarter of them saying they don't know enough either way, which I think makes sense. They might not be able to speak to that specifically. It's much more, sorry, much more likely to be seen as an extremely or very serious problem among residents of color, 36%, than it is among white residents at 23%. Police use of force, statistically, that kind of extremely serious question, there's no difference there. But the extremely serious number is a little bit higher there. Still, overall, very low, but we're kind of squinting and looking at differences here. And then crime in general, that's something where we saw Latino residents were And then crime in general, that's something where we saw Latino residents were a little bit more concerned about that than white residents are. Next slide, please. Perhaps unsurprisingly, residents of color and younger residents were more likely to have experienced and observed racism in Khatari. On the left, left, we can see that frequently occasionally sometimes stacked together, experiencing racism, thirteen percent of white residents say they ever have. Forty-two percent of residents of color have. Observing racism is also much more common for residents of color. And then notably, the age differences here are pretty pronounced. Some of that has to do with the fact that typically in a lot of California communities, the communities of color are younger than white communities are, so there's a little bit of overlap there, but I think that difference really shows up in a lot of places in the survey. Where younger voters are just a lot more sensitive to these issues and, and seeing them happen much more often, fifty-five percent saying they've observed racism in Khatari in the last five years compared to twenty-one percent of seniors. Next slide, please. So another slide with lots of numbers here. We included the, the kind of sub-sample sizes, so we can kind of ground that in a sense of, again, the kind of sample of a sample thing we're looking at here. So we've really looked at places where we saw a big difference between one group and another within the sample, and we saw that residents of color, younger and low-income residents, were slightly more uncomfortable calling police. But there were no statistical differences in stops by race. Where we did see a difference in experiences of being stopped by Khatari police was by household income. Folks with household incomes under a hundred thousand a year, forty percent of those said they'd been stopped at some point. And then with folks above that threshold, twenty-four percent said they had, so that's a, a real notable difference there. Next slide, please. Perceptions of safety, we looked at that by race, ethnicity and age. Those are pretty similar across race and ethnicity. In general, eighty percent and higher for, for safety in the city generally. Interacting with police, a little bit lower safety ratings for Latino residents, but still really broad majorities kind of across those demographic groups. Next slide, please. And then Khatari's police relationship. Here we saw broad majorities say it's a positive one regardless of their race, ethnicity or age. But we do see differences in the kind of the prevalence of these opinions. So twenty-two percent of Latino residents saw a negative relationship, so that's kind of a three-to-one difference versus the one for white residents, that, that gap is much larger. And, and white residents are also notably more, more often saying they don't know either way. I thought that was an interesting finding. The place where we really see a big difference here of the positivity being lower is for folks under forty, fifty-eight percent of them saying it's positive. So overall, a really broadly positive number, but that total negative number is a little bit higher with that group. And that's consistent with something we're finding up and down the West Coast and in other places in the country is that younger folks have just kind of a different experiences and attitudes having to do with policing, regardless of kind of what's going on in their community. They kind of start with that different approach and, and attitude overall. Next slide, please. So we did look again at places where there's overlap, looking at kind of that fourteen percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent. Those numbers kind of pop up over and over again, and we wanted to see is there one group of people that's really making up this, this group that's having a more negative experience? Because that's a place where we want to shine some attention, although you know, the overall numbers are very positive. There are very few statistically significant differences. So in our conclusions, we're, we're scratching to see what the differences are, because we know that's the place where there's a lot of interest in policy. So the shares of people who disapprove of police generally is at fourteen percent and of Khatari police is at fifteen percent. It's relatively small, but it's important for analysis. So we looked at who are, who is especially likely to be in the group where they disapprove of both. And those are people of color and people under thirty. Disapproval rates are below thirty percent even in those groups. So majorities still approve, but that is a place where that, those more critical attitudes are concentrated. And then these next two slides are kind of a, are those next two bullets are, are kind of a grammatically a maze, but I'll try to explain. So people with law enforcement members in their family are more likely to disapprove of police generally than other Khatari residents. But their views of Khatari police are no different than other residents. So if we're talking about kind of a Venn diagram of, of critical of police and critical of Khatari police, the folks who are kind of outside in this, this, this side where they're just more critical of police in general and not of Khatari are folks with kind of that direct experience who have a, an officer in their family. Then the other side of the Venn diagram, the folks who are critical of Khatari police, but no more critical of police in general are those lower-income folks, which makes sense because they also have kind of had more with police and, and things like that. And people who speak a language other than English at home. But their police kind of general views are no different than Khatari residents overall. Next slide, please. Which I believe is our conclusions, yep, next slide, please. So overall, Khatari is perceived as a safe city. Broad majorities say they feel safe interacting with police, driving, walking, playing in their parks and neighborhoods. Residents believe Khatari is an excellent or good place to live overall. They approve of city government generally and at the variety of departments broadly viewed favorably as well. While the police department continues to have the highest approval rating of city functions, that approval rating showed a little bit of a drop between March and November of twenty-twenty, which again is also a little bit difference in, in the sample frame here between voters and, and adults. Notably, there was an increase of approval in building and planning department and a slight decrease in recreation department. So while we're, you know, seeing a little bit of ticks up and down on these, on these different things, views of the city overall are fairly consistent. Majority of respondents felt the impacts of climate change and availability of housing for working families were top concerns, followed by the local economy and the threat of wildfires and with the local economy being an issue of special concern for residents of color. Next slide, please. So then turning more directly to policing issues and, and what that has to do with public safety in, in Khatari. We see a distinct minority of residents around fourteen, fifteen percent with negative perceptions or experiences when it comes to general prejudice in Khatari or police conduct. So this share of residents, it's small, but it has grown since March of twenty-twenty. And those residents are more likely to be younger, low-income and Latino. When we ask people to tell us a little bit in their own words about kind of where these perceptions and attitudes are coming from, these seem to have a lot to do with kind of discrete experiences they've personally had or, or, or know a friend or family member who has. And it has a lot to do with kind of officer attitudes. And then kind of on the flip side, the people who have positive interactions really mention attitudes as well, but those are ones of professionalism, friendliness and respect. Significant shares we saw don't know enough about how kind of Khatari police officers treat people with regard to race and ethnicity, housing or mental health status to rate them, but that is a place where we saw a little bit more dissatisfaction. And I think that is something where we could see broader conversations about kind of reimagining public safety and, and the ways and the roles that police have. That could be a place where people are finding kind of particular questions or information that they would want to know more about. But overall, again, pluralities are saying they don't know enough to say because they haven't had that experience themselves. So I know there was a lot of information and it's pretty late, but it's an important topic, so happy to take questions or, or talk a little bit more about other things we found in the data.
Thank you, Miranda, really appreciate that, that was a, a good presentation. And considering the amount of information, it flowed pretty well, at least for me. I don't know if we have any questions from existing council? Let's see, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, I had one question about the selection of registered voter households. I know that this would exclude any households that can, don't contain American citizens and could possibly exclude people who are convicted of felonies. Does, do you have any estimate of whether that could introduce any bias into the results? If we're not able to include households that don't have citizens in them?
Yeah, that's a, you know, that's kind of the key trade-off. I, I just tried to address a little bit upfront was, you know, in a place with voter registration rates as high as Khatari, it felt like a, a decent trade-off to make, given the, the big increase in budget that would have been necessitated to reach people besides that kind of publicly available information. So the alternative would have been a door-to-door survey, which for many, many reasons is very expensive and not even during COVID. Or postcards, which involves printing and mailing and, and just adds a lot to the cost. So we kind of looked at those trade-offs, saw the very high rates of voter registration and said, this is at least a baseline. Folks, if the entire household, there's no adult who is a citizen who's registered to vote, there's no adult who hasn't had a felony, then it's possible for those folks to be excluded. That's something we just kind of have to keep, keep in mind. And I think we can kind of think about ways maybe in common sense that it might change the data. But overall, this is kind of the trade-off we arrived at to, to kind of reach a representative sample as, as regards kind of ethnicity and age and, and the things that we know that we can kind of control within a reasonable budget and timeline.
Thank you. Was that it Laura, for that, for right now?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I, I was wondering, I just had a technical question about you said you, you weighted responses from demographics that might be underrepresented in your sample. So for instance, ten percent of your sample was Latinx, which is considerably less than our population, we were seventeen percent Latino in the two thousand and ten census and even more now, so. So I'm, I'm curious, given that most of the results you presented were simply percentages, how do you say you, you weighted Latino, Latina responses? I don't understand how you could weight them if the, if the reports are just percentages.
Sure, so the, the well, to the question of the, the Latino, Latinx percentage, we had to look at adults who fit into that category. So the under eighteen numbers will kind of skew that, that number, especially in the direction of residents of color, because as I noted, across California, especially the, the population of color just tends to be younger. So when you look at any sample of voters, it's going to be whiter than any sample of adults. And when you look at all people, it's going to be even more diverse. So I think that's to be expected, that, that little delta there. And then to the question of weighting, I, I'm not sure how exactly to, to get into like the percentages piece, Kurt, do you have?
Well, but you, but I mean, so, so what you were showing us weren't percentages of three hundred and fifty-four respondents. They were actually weighted. You did a weighted calculation with those, where you scaled the, I mean, first of all, to say that we can use registered voters to represent the population at large, but then on the others, on the flip side, say, well, but registered voters are only ten percent Latino and, and and the population is twenty percent, that's an issue. So I guess I'm just trying to get clear, are the numbers we were seeing percentages of three hundred and fifty-four or were they a weighted calculation?
Yeah, Kurt Bailo of FM3, I can answer a couple of these questions for you. So the results were weighted for, for two purposes, and we do this in all of our research. So sometimes we get an imbalance, we may have too many women who respond to the survey relative to their proportion. And so we give a, a lesser weight to their responses and a greater weight to men who responded such that they, they balance out to look at the, like the overall percentages that we want to see. Another reason why we do weighting is that oftentimes we use split sampling in our surveys, where half respondents get one set of questions and half get the other. And we may in aggregate have, for example, the, the gender balance, how we are targeting, but they may be skewed within those split samples. And we use a similar technique to balance those out, so the split samples or demographics that represent each other. So the responses we're looking at here were, were weighted and they're using that same technique where like you would give a, a weighting factor of you know, point nine to one group's response and one point one to another group's response to balance out. And I just want to clarify something on the sampling methodology. There are, as, as Miranda noted, more rigorous and definitely more expensive ways to do resident surveys. And to work within the city budget and understanding some of the budget challenges that COVID is actually facing your community here. We were really trying to keep the overall costs down. And one of the most cost-effective ways, particularly in the community that's smaller like yours, is to use a listed sample. You get a list of phone numbers and email addresses that you can use. And the voter list is the most readily available one in the community that has a high level of voter registration. It, it's, it's better than other places. We didn't just talk to voters in each household, we just used that as, as an opportunity to here's a phone number of someone that's in this household, here's an email address of someone in this household. And we would say any adult over the age of eighteen could take that survey. So and that for phone interviews, we actually had a little randomization at the beginning. I forget whether we used the adult who's had their most recent birthday or one of those little tricks that we often use to introduce some randomization there. It does exclude households that don't have a single voter registered in them. I think another council member pointed that out. But we were not limiting our, our responses to only voters and we were using quotas based upon the census data.
Thanks.
Thanks Kurt.
Vice Mayor Lemon?
Thank you. Yeah, I think certainly last year was a momentous year, a lot of things happening. And one of the things that became clear to many of us is the need to perhaps reassess some of our perceptions. So I was very happy to see us move forward with this polling work. And I was particularly happy to see FM3 be selected to do it. Having been on the council for some time and worked in other agencies where I've seen your work, I know you've done a lot and at least from my personal perception, every time I've looked at your polling afterwards, that has reflected pretty adequately the reality of, of what happened. So I've seen accuracy in the past. So it brings me to the question, I would imagine, because you're a large agency that does a lot of polling for many years, I would imagine, correct me if I'm wrong, that you have done similar polls to what we just asked you to do in other places. Specifically dealing with issues of concern to do with racism in relationship with the local police department. And I wondered if you'd give me a sense, if you have a comfort and give me a sense of where Khatari stands in comparison to the local region, perhaps the greater region? Is our amount of racism notably low, meaning that's good news? Obviously, there's always a need to improve, but that seems, sounds positive. Are we average, like everybody else? And that goes back to the same thing, calls for need to improve. Or in fact, do we have a notable problem with it being rather high? Do you have a comfort level kind of giving just ground truth thing that a little for me? My sense from the presentation, it was very good and very quick for such a large amount of data, was I thought it was largely positive numbers, but I, I, if you can compare that without naming other places, which I know you can't do, I think that would be helpful for me and my colleagues and the public.
Yeah, so I can speak to some projects I've worked, I've worked on and Kurt has kind of some different ones that he may be able to speak to as well. I haven't asked the question too often in other places about experiences and observations of racism most specifically, but I have had some polling in, in other places that has been around policing and public safety, especially in the summer. Lots of folks were really interested in kind of ground truthing things that were going on in, in the news and things like that. And I would say that it's very common for overall people to feel positively about kind of police and their role in the community, while at the same time having a kind of mixed feelings about what they want that role to be and, and kind of how they see that going forward. So one community I could talk about, because they leaked the, it was for a private client and, and the entire poll got leaked to a local newspaper, but that was in Portland. So even in a place like Portland, that is, you know, demographically more diverse than Khatari, but still majority white at this time, I think. That was a place where we saw overall positive views of policing, but really, really strong support for some measures that, that would bring kind of different training and accountability and things like that. So I think kind of the, the narrative I'm seeing kind of around from, from these, this research is that people can kind of feel positively about police, maybe have had some negative experiences or know someone who have, feel like there's room for change. They can have all those opinions at the same time. And, and kind of demographics and diversity does a lot to kind of mediate, obviously, like people's attitudes and experiences. But when we're kind of taking the, the big picture view in other communities, it's, it's very common to see kind of positive views of police and existing at the same time of people thinking about some, some places where there's room for improvements. And I don't know if Kurt, you've seen some, some other thing, research you've done too.
I think very similar experiences and I, and I will say that you're, the places where we have conducted this research so far in the last, you know, six months or so. you're, the places where we have conducted this research so far in the last, you know, six months or so. Has been in much bigger communities for the most part. You, I think, should take pride in the fact that you're one of the first smaller communities that we worked with at least. That have done, dedicated resources to investigate something like this in a more methodological, you know, manner. I, I'm not aware of too many other communities who have needed to throw a question or two on an existing survey, but really dedicated it. And so I, I, I don't have a lot of great comparison points of similarly sized communities. Situated similarly more suburban and wider communities to compare with. But nothing in here is particularly surprising, particularly those attitudes about police that Miranda noted.
Okay, so no really, nothing else to base on, so it's hard to just give us a sense of where we're at. Is that, is that what you're telling me?
Well, I would say that, well, I mean, it's, I think one of the questions you were framing upfront was, are we? I may have the words a little bit wrong here, sort of have more or less racism in our, in our community than, than someone else. And I would say that this looks like it is low. But I also haven't, don't have any firsthand experience with smaller suburban communities that are predominantly white to compare it with. So my comparison points are with larger, more diverse communities.
Granted, so that's helpful. That gives me idea, that gives me the caveats that the data doesn't correlate very easily. So take that with a grain of salt. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not trying to be evasive, but that's just, I don't have, we don't have perfect analogies.
Exactly. And that's why I was asking you if you had any comfort, because I wasn't sure if you'd be able to, but that actually, you did give me what I needed to hear. So I understand where we're at, what's going on with us. And I'm also pleased to see that we seem to be outliers in moving this direction. I think there's a lot of value in this. I think this is where you, ground truth where you're at, what your community is doing. And I think in doing this in an ongoing process to some degree, committing to that would be a valuable thing in the future too, to track this. See this, look for improvement and to make sure that problems don't increase. I, I, I think that's part of providing good customer service. We regularly do it to see how people feel about other services. It really needs to happen here. So I, I appreciate the presentation, the answers tonight. Thank you, Mr. Bilo.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. A couple of things, in the conclusions, you've talked about changes, though small, growing since March 2020. But I believe, as you pointed out, this is really the first survey that we've done where we actually broke down ethnic and age breakdowns. So isn't it a little bit more difficult to make those comparisons? And give solid conclusions if this is really the first time we've come at it with those pieces of information?
Yeah, so I think, you know, as mentioned, we had in the prior years been focused on election related issues. And so we look at voter as the kind of unit. And here we're looking at a household that contains a voter, which is broader, and that was our goal. And so as you mentioned, it's not totally apples to apples. I think the comparison I was using this week is like oranges to clementines or something like that. So we know there are a lot of voters within our broader sample this time, but it's going to be different. It's going to be a little younger, a little more diverse. It's kind of different on, differ on other ways voters and non-voters do. And that's kind of the value of repeating the research with the same framing in future years would be to have an actual apples to apples comparison. So yeah, here we have to kind of look at some other, maybe some other sources of data or, or anecdotal evidence to kind of see, does, does it make sense? The changes we're seeing or the differences we're seeing rather than, rather than changes.
And I think that that's the value also that we've seen over the years of, of actually doing this on a regular basis to be able to do comparisons. But it does require every time we kind of change what we're doing to kind of then stay consistent. So we can, we can actually see patterns. One of the things that struck me when you were going through your presentation is the fact that discrimination and things like that, that a lot of folks saw it and observed it. But it wasn't, it was more in the community versus as specific to policing. I know we were headed towards this, towards policing, but it sounded like from a community perspective, there were more general observations of that. Did I get that?
Yeah, I think that's right. And I think that makes sense. I mean, people probably like go to the grocery store or take a walk in the park a lot more often than they see someone getting pulled over. You know, depending on the city you live in and neighborhood and so on. But I think the opportunity to observe it in the broader context is, is there more often. And so that it makes sense that people would report having seen or, or experienced it in that broader context more often.
So from a broader perspective, as a community, not specific to the city services. As a community, we may need to do, as, as counsel or Vice Mayor Landon put it. We may need to do more work as a community so that people don't feel that. Not necessarily specifically with city services, but just in general. We may need to be looking at, at things there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I don't want to rehash because it is getting late, but thank you very much.
Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I was hoping for us to accomplish was the survey was to really hear from people of color and really hear and listen to their perspectives and just make it clear that the city is hearing them and listening to them. And some of the things I wanted to highlight that came out in this survey. 20 of the 354 respondents, or about 5% of respondents, had had, had experienced or observed racial bias from the police. I know that it's not, I'm not sure how the weighting was done. But if we, just as an order of magnitude ballpark estimate, if 5% of our respondents had observed or experienced something like that. Then if we multiply that out by 6,000 adults in Katati, that's, that would be about 300 people who have observed or experienced a racist interaction with the police. So I want to make sure, even though that number is small, that's 300 people-ish, somewhere in that ballpark. That I want to make sure feel heard. That their responses were heard. And another person had brought up that in the analysis, often it was sort of grouped up. Where extremely or very serious numbers were, were highlighted. If we expand out to include somewhat serious, so sort of looking at everyone who thought this was a problem. 52% of Latino respondents and 58% of people of color believed that racial discrimination was a problem in Katati. And 50% of Latino and 48% of people of color believed that police use of force was a problem in Katati. So I want to make sure that, that the people who responded that way in the survey are heard.
Thank you. I'm not certain that you can extrapolate those numbers like that, Laura. And maybe the experts can, can chime in on that. To say that 300 people would, would have issues. In, in such a small town, extrapolation like that, I don't, I'm not sure that that really is an accurate statement. Miranda, would you be, be kind enough to comment on that?
Well, I want to look at how the question that came from is phrased before I.
Well, while you're looking at it up, Miranda, just note that I think we, we talked about that in terms of experience or observed. And it's, it's also entirely possible that multiple people may have observed the same incident or something along those lines as well, worth, worth kind of keeping in mind. But sorry, Miranda, are you looking at the question structure?
Yeah, so I'm not seeing that question applied to police interactions specifically. But yeah, I mean, what, what Kurt, Kurt said is applies here. Have you personally experienced or observed, didn't specify police, although that may have come from a different question than the one I'm finding here.
Are you stated on the follow up that 20 of them had specified that it was the police specifically?
Oh, okay, that was from question.
14, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that was of people overall, yeah. Yeah, I think Kurt, Kurt has all that I would add to the context.
The question itself was what, Miranda?
Was which, I think it's coming from which department or service was that when they experienced or observed racism involving a city employee? Where the kind of modal answer, the most common answer was the police department.
Thank you very much. Laura, you had another question or comment on that?
Well, I just wanted to respond to your statement that what I was saying might not be accurate. If this is a representative survey and they've gone to great pains to make it representative of our community, then I, I don't understand why it wouldn't be at least at an order of magnitude estimate roughly representative of the community.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fair to do that math, as you have. I think there's a lot of caveats. And we're dealing with, you know, margin of error of around 5%. And you're talking about small, small percentages, you know, small differences will make a difference. But I think in terms of a general order of, here's 20 people here. And you simplify that up, it's going to be a triple digit number.
Yeah, and then more broadly, you know, this is where it stops being an FM3 research question and becomes a City of Katati question is like, what number or what percentage would be acceptable? And, and you know, and you might say it's zero and you might say it's higher than that. So I think that there's a lot of nuance to that discussion. That kind of goes beyond the numbers too.
Thank you very much. I know it's not an action item, but I thought I might open it up to the general public if they want to have some comments on this or have some further questions or clarification. Ms. Burgess, if you'd kindly facilitate that for me.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Caller with the last four digits of 0694. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jim Duffy. I live in Roner Park. When our survey population's 80% white, we start out with a group that's probably had largely positive interactions with the police. And has no experience of bias in law enforcement. It makes the best sense for us to focus on the portions of the survey that the reports on the experience of our BIPOC community. Focusing on those numbers, we can see there are areas of significant racial concern and bias in Katati. Katati's BIPOC community is telling us the truth. And it's time for us to accept their experiences as real. And to see that the reason for their different experiences from our white experiences are due to racial bias. The report appears to deliberately distort the negative category by eliminating the category to exclude the somewhat negative answers. As Councilmember Sparks correctly pointed out, when we correct for this distortion, you see that 58% of Katati's residents of color see racial discrimination and prejudice as a problem in Katati. And 49% of these residents see police use of force as a problem. These numbers are concerning and demand attention. I recommend that the city council appoint a community member task force to learn about and eventually recommend an effective civilian oversight body in the appropriate form and structure to meet the needs of your community. Clearly, the model will need to recommend that it include a robust community engagement component to help bridge the, the divide between your police and your BIPOC community. Thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you.
Adrian Lobbie, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Adrian Lobbie. I live on Kingston Way in Katati. There's a couple of things that us white people do that I call racism. And one is that we think that white is normal. And I'm going to call myself out on this because I talked to Damian, was invited in to talk to him about the survey and what we would like to see, what I, I thought would be good questions. And I never thought to question who was doing the survey. And now as I read the survey, I see things that I see, I think are biased within the survey results and the way the survey results are presented. And I have to wonder, well, if we had gotten a, a firm that was specifically focused on BIPOC and racial issues, would we have had a very different result in, in not only the questions, but in the way the, the answers are, are given to us? So here's one example of that. Page 39, the demographic subgroups most likely to disapprove of both the police and Katati are generally people of color, especially Latinos, people under 30. However, even in these groups, disapproval rates are below 30%. So you could write that comment, in these groups, disapproval sometimes reaches as high as 30%. So I think there's several ways I saw in the, in the survey and Jim Duffy just pointed out another example where we're getting kind of a rosy picture or a white picture. And you know, that's not to denigrate anyone. A lot of work went into this and there's a lot of good information. But I think we really need to look at what the serious issues are. When we have so many people who are with incomes under 60,000 and speak a language other than English who are having trouble with the police, when we see, what is it, one in five people who have seen racism in our, in our city? You know, the other thing we white folks like to do is say, well, really, I don't see it. I don't see racism, so it's probably not there. But here we have a survey saying a whole bunch of people of color are saying, oh, it's, it's here, it's here. And I think it really behooves us to take it very seriously. Again, as Jim said, these are very serious things to have happen. They're not minor. Racism in your daily life really affects your health, your wellbeing and, and all sorts of other things. So I hope we can move from making a survey to having a small group to really dig into it, think about it and think about how to make solutions happen in our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marjorie Crumshares, go ahead.
Thank you. I've spoken earlier, but I didn't tell you I'm a Katati resident. For 10 years, I lived on Mattery Circle. There were, first of all, thank you very much for, to the city council for okaying and paying for this, this poll. Thank you to both of the presenters. You did a whopping job. We in Katati do live in a bubble. But there are shadows in our bubble. And this poll shows some of those shadows. When I look at a total of 354 respondents. And at one point, I learned that roughly 60% of our population is white, 30% Latino, 10% other people of color who are not Latino. And then I look at the percentages of the ethnic demographics. 74% white, less than 10% Latino or 10% and 1% other people of color. That's a shadow. We need to look at that shadow and shine a light on it. I have a question about racism and the definition of that. Whether or not there was one given or if it was left open for people to interpret.
It was left open for people to interpret how they, how they might.
Okay, thank you for that. The bottom line here, I think, is this is a start. We have work to do here. And Mr. Duffy, I don't know him, but he suggested a way for that to happen. And I couldn't agree with that more. We need to look at our shadows in our bubble. And to do that, it does not and should not only be city council and staff, but those of us in the community, a representative group in the community. I happen to be black. I don't know if there is another person of color attending this meeting. But I feel very strongly that from this poll, we have work to do and we can do it. Gandhi said, we must be the change we expect to see in the world. And that starts here in our bubble, shining a light on the shadows. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniela D'Orio, go ahead.
Hi, um, so many great comments. Yeah, my name is Daniela, Daniela, and I live here in Khatari. I've been here for about ten years as well. And um, I just first wanted to say thank you so much to Ms. Everett and to Mr. Bello for these this survey. And thank you to city council for moving forward so quickly and getting this done. I do really think this is a great start. Um, and yeah, I just wanted to echo what some other commenters have said. It's so interesting, you know, that we have the twenty-five percent of those surveyed believe racism is a problem. And we are about seventy-five percent white. So it's it's just those numbers are very interesting. I think white people, we really, we don't see racism because we don't experience it. So if we want to know more about what it's like to be a person of color in Khatari, we really need to ask black people, indigenous people and people of color and, you know, our Latinx population as well. Because if we ask white people, you know, do you experience racism? I mean, you're not, you know, we don't, we don't see it. We really, we can't see it. And I think that's a point that we we have to um, we have to make and we have to understand that. And even just looking at our demographics here in Khatari, we are less than one percent black, I believe. I mean, there's a reason people don't feel safe. People of color actually don't feel safe in Sonoma County in general. Um, you know, we have an issue going on in Petaluma with a local leader who actually she left Petaluma because she didn't feel safe and she's been harassed online. You know, because of and because of certain things, there's a whole thing going on that she she got a vaccine. She's a woman of color and she was allowed to get a vaccine. Um, you know, she was like on the first tier because she does community work and a lot of white people got very upset and actually slandered her online. Um, and she, you know, she just, she doesn't feel safe here as a person of color and I think it's important that if we want to know more about racism, we have to listen to people of color and not, you know, ask white people if they see it. I also just wanted to say that I think a task force would be a really great idea to um to just take a look at this more closely. And um, of course, again, just be asking our our BIPOC population, um, you know, how they see and experience racism here. And um, yeah, and I think grouping the somewhat dissatisfied, as Councilmember Sparks stated, with the extremely dissatisfied, that does make a lot more sense to me logically that we look at it that way. As a teacher, I do these really informal polls with students and I want to know who's feeling positively and feeling like they're learning in my class and who's feeling negatively. And I think somewhat dissatisfied should go with extremely dissatisfied. So that's just my two cents there. But again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, it's certainly a lot of information to take in. I don't know. We haven't had a further comments for the council. It's not an action item at this point. It's a discussion. And it is a lot to um absorb. Ms. Uh, Councilmember Sparks.
Mayor Moore, if I may interject, uh, we have one more attendee who would like to comment.
Uh, certainly.
Carol, go ahead.
Yeah, Carol Williams and I live in Khatari and uh, I think it's very clear from the survey, especially if we combine very dissatisfied and somewhat dissatisfied, that we have a lot of work to do and I completely agree with the uh comments asking to uh establish a group of people to work together and try to uh deal with some of these issues and make recommendations uh for action. And uh, so I hope that the city council will uh listen to a proposal that would allow that to happen and would be supportive. Because I think it's very clear that we have a lot of work to do.
Will Proudie, go ahead.
I'm just going to keep it uh really brief and just say this study highlights a lot of issues with how our city government and police force serve our community. And I would like to see citizen oversight of the police department. I appreciate the council for doing this study and I want to say thank you for the new council members who are supportive of this work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that it on public comment, Ms. Burgess?
That does it. Public comment.
Thank you very much. I will bring it back to the council and I believe I had called on Ms. Sparks, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure I understand this is on the action portion of the agenda, so I thought that it was an action item.
Well, we're discussing the issue, but what is the action to take on this? Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion if it's allowable under the Brown Act or whatever. I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to come up with a proposal for us on the composition and function of an ad hoc or a temporary committee to look at some of these issues. I know we've had a lot of suggestions for what that committee would look like coming from the community. And I think it's time that we take action and and really look, look at whether we could make that committee and and do some concrete steps towards it.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
Okay, my motion is second. Any further discussion? Okay, um, I would like to add a little further discussion on that. Although I'm not opposed to a commission, I think that there is a community commission core. And if um if some council members wanted to be part of that, that might be good. And that would be my thinking on that. Uh, I don't know. I think it's an educational component in this whole issue that is greater than city services or greater than the police department. I think it's a a community and I think there's an embedded racism in society and the numbers reflect in the poll. Do I think Khatari is any greater than any other cities? I don't think so. I think it's a whole educational component that's required. Those are my thoughts on that. Uh, I will bring it back to Councilmember Hardy.
Um, I guess my only concern is that um, where does the funding come from? Where is the staff time allocated? This, I know, is something that came up uh afterward and we agreed to fund the survey, but what I'm hearing is that we're asking for a whole lot more work to be done. And where is that funding? And if Damian wants to tell me that that it's available, that's fine. I I just have concerns about spending a lot more money without us. What are we giving up? So there's only so much and if that means we have to not do something else, I'd kind of like to know that since this was not, you know, this is, has come up after our budget.
So um, if the the action is, well, the it's not even an action, it's just basically a direction on a future item. If that, uh, if that's the will of the council, then that's a question I'll have to explore is how we would do that and what kind of time and, you know, financial commitment that would require and um, what would, with what that would displace in terms of other things. But that would have to be a discussion um for a separate agendaized day.
It would also, yeah, it would also require what's that, what the composition of that commission would look like. Heck, we can't even get some volunteers to serve on a, you know, citizen oversight or a planning commission or things like that. So I, it sounds good. In reality, I I have my concerns. But I I will open it up now to Vice Mayor Lemon.
There we go. That was actually unmuted. Good. Well, I think clearly there's an interest and a goal from at least some in Khatari, various at Roner Park now clearly to to drive towards one end goal, which is citizen oversight of the police by removing council control of police issues here. I'm not ready to go there, but I was interested very much in the early uh rough, uh, non-scientific, if you will, but still effort at getting a community poll that came before me. Initially, there were some things I thought were troubling. They didn't quite match my sense of what I thought was going on in this town, but it's never numerous speakers have made clear that doesn't mean anything. There might be a whole world that I'm not seeing because of who I am. It's true for all of us. So that's why I was interested in what I heard tonight. And and again, I see now, again, we all do seem to live in different worlds. Because what I heard tonight in terms of a report was nothing that gave me the feeling that we're as a need to remove council control of the police. I do believe I would like to continue to monitor the police of the things we agreed to previously by continuing annual reports to the on this, to continue to implement the supplemental training of both those requirements, best practices through the training, most importantly to me, an ongoing review of annual RIPA board reports and recommendations for continued improvement and quality improvement, along with an outside independent review of police compliance. Because even if we feel roughly from these numbers, it looks like our police are doing pretty well, you want to monitor that. You want to know, you could have the best rules in the world, but if your people aren't following them out in the streets, they mean nothing. You want to see what the attitudes, what the esprit de corps, if you will, is in the place itself. And that's what you get with that. So those efforts I fully support and am interested in. This, I I don't think I'm as supportive of. I like where we're going before. I do think we can be responsible for monitoring our police as well as all our employees. That's our job. And I'm open to the ways I can, both as a council member and a citizen and just a human being in this town impacting my fellow neighbors and citizens, hopefully to all of us be the best people we can. But as far as is the city council putting together the committee to try and find ways to change people's perceptions, that might be uh although I'm not seeing it as needed in this world, I'm not sure it's something we can really do or that it would be effective at all. Uh, but it would open the door again to something I'm not interested in, which is ceding control over our organization to the citizen committee. I have concerns about that having its own set of problems and I'll I'll just leave it at that. So I appreciate that I I may not be fitting with everybody here. I appreciate what you've said and I'll continue to think about that and uh but that's where I'm meant to not have asked to vote. I would probably vote no right now because I haven't seen anything this data that convinced me of the need for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Yes, um, before Councilmember Sparks made her motion, I was, I was um thinking of making a motion to continue this discussion to a future meeting, given the hour, because I think it's a, it's a considerably more discussion that's needed than we can, well, than my brain can manage at eleven oh seven at night. But um, I will say that the that the motion that I seconded had nothing to do with establishing some other citizen body to oversee the police. So that is a discussion we might choose to have as a council, perhaps as a as a response to whatever this ad hoc sort of, if we create some kind of ad hoc body. If if the city manager comes back with some options for temporary or ad hoc sorts of bodies that could look into the polling data and other issues around uh race and police, then that might bring the issue of citizen oversight distinct from city council. I mean, we're citizens as well and city council direct oversight of police is another form of of citizen oversight. As it is, we we oversee the city manager and the city attorney, not the police directly. And and so the the that's, that's a discussion for the future and the motion that I believe is before us is is not about establishing some other police oversight mechanism. It was simply, and I I think city manager Obit put it correctly, that it's it's really about asking staff to come back with some options for us to a future discussion. Uh, options about how we might structure uh an ongoing engagement with this topic other than us all talking about it uh in a in a regular city council meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Uh, Councilmember Sparks?
Councilmember Ford, sorry, I didn't mute myself. Um, pretty much covered what I was going to say. I just wanted to clarify that my motion was not about creating a citizen oversight commission. It was about providing a place where conversations that are including law enforcement, including council members, including members of the public could discuss these issues and make recommendations to the city council and really take time to look at these issues. So it wouldn't cede any city council control at all because it would be a body that makes recommendations to us that we could then look at.
Councilmember Sparks, could you restate what your motion was?
My motion, I hope I can say it exactly as I said it before, uh, was to direct staff to provide to bring back to the council a recommendation for the composition and charge of temporary committee that would examine um issues of race racism in Khatari. And um, that that was the motion. With the idea, with the idea that we could take up discussion of what a body like this might look like at a future meeting. So today, we wouldn't be committing to even create that group, but just to direct staff to examine the creation of such a group so we could look at it together later.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hardy?
Yeah, I'm, what I'm hearing is a temporary group, but what the words that are being asked for about community engagement and police engagement and all of that is more feels more like a um permanent committee. So we have ad hoc things for specific things, say an event or say, you know, something like that. But what I hear is that we're trying to look more broadly at the community and policies and and um things that we might be able to change, which seems more like a um, I don't know, just for lack of a better term. It's late, as as was pointed out, when we used to have the C E C committee that kind of looked at the community and environmental issues. It seems more like that's what you're talking about than a, something that's temporary. And that's what I kind of like to know where it is we're headed because something that's more permanent, you know, we do have to get into, you know, what is their charge? What are their boundaries? What, you know, who's included? How do, how do we um, how do we staff it? How do we get citizens on it? How do, you know, there's a lot more thought that has to go into to do something like that than, you know, something that's short-lived. So that's, I don't know. I'm getting tired, I think.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lemon, right?
It's okay. It's It's okay. It's late. I'll answer to Mark. That works. Yeah, I appreciate the clarification. It is true. All we're asking tonight, or all you're asking in your motion tonight is to just begin discussions on some sort of ad hoc group or some function combined of citizens, public law enforcement to look into this. But my point is, it's very clear to me by the discussion we've had for months here, for the people who are to be involved, the clear goal largely is citizen oversight of the police, and this is opening the door to that. So I find them kind of somewhat the same. And the interest in having a discussion between the public, the council, law enforcement, to see what they could add to that is a valuable one. But that is exactly what we've been doing for some months here now. And it is what we will continue to do, and I certainly hope we continue to do, as I've stressed, on a regular, ongoing basis here, because I think it's absolutely necessary to monitor and to continue to work with. But we've done that already. We've done that and we'll continue to do that. So I'm not sure I see the value of this, frankly. Having said that, that's my last comment for the night because it is after eleven and I've kept you up late. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So it sounds like we have a motion on the floor and a second to direct the staff to provide the council with what a quote unquote commission might look like or the makeup of that commission. Is that correct? Okay. Looks like I'm getting a consensus and not on that. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, it, it's not just that, but we, we, if you're going to set up a committee, we need to know what its boundaries are. What is its resources? How is it, you know, is it a, you know, Brown Act acted committee? Is it, you know?
I think this is where the, the directive is to the city manager to come back to us with what those various types of commissions and or committees might look like. And then we can have a further discussion on if, if, if we would like to pursue those.
Okay. Because when I first heard the motion, the motion sounded like, oh, we just want a little ad hoc of a couple of people here. But this is really broader than that. I mean, if what you're, what you're saying is, and I'm not saying that I disagree in any way, shape or form with the comments that were made that, you know, we don't necessarily see and we need more work here. I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. But what does that committee look like and what, what it is, what, what are their objectives? What is their outputs? You know, what, what, what are they responsible for bringing back to us? And I want to be sure that's clear because that's really a lot broader than just a little ad hoc. Because what you're really talking about, if I listen to what people's comments are, is they want to change the community. They want that community to be more inclusive. They want to address these things. Well, that leads into policy changes and, you know, other education and training and, and lots of other things, which, which is just bigger than something simple as was put out.
Thank you. My understanding is the motion is to direct staff to bring back what some of those various commissions might look like. Councilmember Sparks?
I, I think when I said temporary, I didn't mean just some little, I'm trying to say the way you said, a little, little ad hoc thing. I, I do think it'd be important for staff to provide us some of those options, like what, what have other communities done? What have other bodies created? I know that S R J C has created an ad hoc committee to look at issues like this. Maybe we could look at their model and see how they've done it. And, and I'm sorry, it is late. I'm having trouble. But, but I, as far as the, what the output of the committee would be, I know that our group, the group core has been putting a lot of thought into that and has sent ideas about what the output would be to the city council in the past. And there's a lot of room for discussion about that before we make any sort of commitment to create a body like this. And I also wanted to speak to Councilmember Landman's point that I really, although police oversight by civilian bodies is something that a lot of people in the community would like to see. I mean, sixty-five percent of Cattotti residents voted for, or Cattotti voters voted for, for measure P. But I really don't think that that's the main goal of the community members who are asking for this ad hoc committee. It's one of the goals, but it's not, this is not a Trojan horse for civilian oversight. I think there's a whole range of issues that they're interested in looking at.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Burgess, do you have a clear or city manager Obit, do you have a clear language on what that motion would look like? Or clear understanding?
Well, yeah. So I think after listening into the discussion, there's kind of, there's two options, right? One is there's the motion on the floor to look at bringing back options to the council for some sort of ad hoc committee to look at racism in the community. And I believe that's, at least that's my understanding. And the alternative is to, is to continue on, you know, the current path. I mean, not that that wouldn't still also be happening, but we're continuing to work on the annual report, probably coming back in the next month or so. Starting RIPA and policy compliance review. All, all these things are going to be coming back to the council. So, I mean, in terms of, in terms of police activity specifically, there's going to be certainly far, quite a bit more discussion over the next couple of months as these products come forward.
So we have a motion to direct the staff to come back with some suggestions on what a commission and or committee may look like. Ms. Burgess, could you give us a roll call? We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
That would work better if I unmuted. No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you. So we have some direction on that. We'll, this will certainly be coming back and it's certainly an important issue. And I thank you all for your participation in that. Let me go back to my agenda. It's getting late. This quarter, are you still up for your presentation?
I, I did want to double check with Mr. Barker and make sure we didn't need a motion to extend.
I already did earlier at ten o'clock.
Oh, we did?
When you were resting.
I missed that one. Sorry. No, I am all good. Thank you. And I will make sure I make this as brief as possible while still providing all the good information.
Thank you so much. And you're welcome to start if you'd like.
Yeah, let me get the slides up. So, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers in our community that are still lasting on with us after eleven o'clock. It's my pleasure to report out to you this evening our annual financial report to the community, also known as our PAFR. So this report is a summary of our several comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty, in a much more consolidated, you know, consolidated concise form. Let me make sure I can skip the next slide fairly easily. There we go. Okay. So, thank you. So the overview of what I'm presenting includes how this is a key part of our city goals and administrative services department goals. We're also going to briefly describe what the G F O A is and what a PAFR is and what is the importance of, is the Cattotti PAFR, like what's the importance of it and what it provides to our community. So again, our department goals really is just to continue to provide the highest level of reporting to the public while still providing quality reporting. We want to make sure that it actually reaches a majority of our users. So not just that it's the best report, but it's a best report for every individual that's interested in finding more information about their community. So we do a lot of annual reporting in our department. This is just a brief synopsis of some of the reports we do, including the annual budget, budget and brief, comprehensive annual report, which was a part of our agenda items earlier tonight, the popular annual financial report. We also do extensive state reporting that we report out to state once we finish our CAFR. We then, of course, have to put in a completely different format for the state because they don't want to see it in the way that we have to do it for everyone else. They want it in their own special format. So we do that as well for them. We also do maintenance of effort reports. And all these are available mostly on our city website. But again, those S C O reports, since they are very specially defined for the state, you can also find those on the S C O website for the state of California. I'm sorry if I start shaking. I'm a little cold right now. So what is the G F O A? And why is it important to Cattotti? Why do we use them as a resource? So the G F O A was established, I believe, in nineteen oh six. It was a different name at that time. And then they've been consolidated, grouped with different groups. But their mission is really to advance the excellence in public financial reporting and just public finance in general. They have well over twenty thousand members. And we use their resources not only for specific white papers on best practices on financial reporting and financial maintenance, investment strategies. They also use, they also provide a lot of training mechanisms and training classes, webinars that we use our staff, we send our staff to. But mostly, when you hear us talk about the G F O A, it's about our financial reporting. And the best thing about their financial reporting is it's all done by professionals in the industry. So they're either independent auditors. They are also professionals who create their own financial reports or other outside specialists, consultants that use these types of reports for analysis. So they are very much the experts in these fields and they review all of these financial statements and give us critique back automatically when we apply for an award, as well as say, yes, you've met all the criteria for this award and you get, you can earn an award for presenting all these financial statements in the manner stipulated. So we get a lot of feedback back from it as well as earning an award. So that's what the CAFR is. Now, what is a PAFR? So the G F O A established the popular annual financial report in order to encourage cities and municipalities, not just to do this comprehensive annual financial report, but to provide something in a simplified format that was more focused on the community and what the community needs were of that financial statement. So just like the F M three report, we want our citizens to know what our financial and economic standings are of our city. So what, how are our assets and liabilities? What are our expenses looking like? Without it being a two hundred page report, what's the nitty gritty? Are we okay? And so that's what our PAFR is for us. So unlike the CAFR, like I said, there's a lot of requirements for a CAFR down to the font size and font type that you're supposed to use in a CAFR in order to get an award. So it's very prescriptive. The PAFR is, you have to have a CAFR and an award-winning CAFR in order to substantiate your PAFR. But there's, the PAFR is definitely a lot more open and it's what you define as the needs for your citizens or users of this public or popular annual financial report. So it has to be clearly advised, any reader, that there is a CAFR. And you have to refer them back to that because that really is the foundation of the financial statements that you're presenting and that audit opinion on it. You have to make sure you're including all the appropriate information that you should and that's not misleading. And you have to explain any significant items of concern or interest. So how do we create the PAFR? So we really focus it on our community and we like to provide the history and demographics of the city as well as providing great pictures of you all so that when people see you out in the streets, they know who you are and they can reach out to you and go, ah, there, I'm going to talk to them about the streets and the sidewalks that I want fixed. As well as also list the different various services and information about the city hall. Because these are all really stuff that they're, they're more interested in, even sometimes more than finance, even though they should be more interested in finance. This is really what makes it popular. And a key thing we always make sure we include in there is that we are interested in the priorities of our citizens and what our business centers and citizens want to know and what they want from us. And so we do make sure we're, because our end of our financial season comes right into our budget. So just as we're finishing all this, we're looking towards what's our strategic objectives for the next year. And so we want to make sure we're reaching out to them with this financial information, with how they can reach back out to us. How do they communicate with us with what they want for our strategic objectives for the next year? And then also along the same lines of the strategic objectives, we let them know, hey, right away, our strategic objectives are really based on our goals and our accomplishments. Here's what we've done. Here's what we did spend this money on. That's in the financial report in easy layman terms. You know, here's our improved communications of our financial condition. So we did the budget and brief. We provided a PAFR. These are all the good things that we're doing to provide to you and a place to go and look for them on our website or to reach back out to, to us here at City Hall in order to get more information about these other goals and objectives, our continued economic development and support that work on our community's safety and our relationships with our community members. And of course, our significant investments in our infrastructure projects. So that's all the fun stuff that we get to provide. And then we also still have to provide financial data because it is a financial report still. So we list quite a bit of our consolidated financial reports in a much smaller format. So it's easy, pocket-friendly, not the giant CAFR or budget book that Susan Harvey likes to carry around. But it has, again, those highlights for the fiscal year, the comparative statements, statement of activities, the revenues, all these other different statements that are just snapshots of where we are to make sure that citizens know that we are in a good place or maybe we're working on improving this area. So for my report out as to where we are in the summary of this PAFR, which is already a summary, the net position has improved overall by two point seven million dollars. And this is primarily due, you wouldn't think of this as a net, as an improvement because you're spending money, but your net position improves when you invest more in your assets. So because we invested so much in our streets improvement, staff, traffic safety and the flooding rant, infrastructure improvements that actually increased our net position in the city. Our cash investments increased by nineteen point two million from the prior years. Sorry, increased to nineteen point two million. I knew that was wrong. From last year, seventeen point two million. Most of this is restricted for special revenues, but there is the three point, five point three million in the general fund that is unrestricted. The general fund's end of year fund balance was seven point five million. And it's almost a three point five percent increase over the prior year. So everything, as you can see, is trending up. So the statement of net position, so what is a statement of net position? And another good thing, I don't think I put it in here, but the PAFR does provide a full list of general government financial terms. So it's an easy table of contents. So you can look through it and not feel as nervous when you see different things in financial statements or different acronyms that we're using here at City Hall, because it kind of gives a brief explanation of what they all are. And in layman's terms, that's a really important thing for us. So statement net position is really a balance sheet. So what are our assets? What are our cash and our, you know, equipment, facilities, things that we've invested in versus how much we owe? So that's our net position or our balance sheet. As far as Cattotti is concerned, it's increased in the current and other assets due to some delays in the capital projects due to COVID nineteen. So our typical spring, summer construction season got pushed. And so since we have that fiscal year on that kind of goes in the middle of our construction year, some of that got pushed and delayed. And so we do have higher value of the cash and cash equivalents and capital projects. We did have a minor decrease in long-term liabilities due to paying down other debts. And the CAFR, that's another thing we always push to in the PAFR is that the CAFR has a the CAFR, we, that's another thing we always push to in the PAFR is that the CAFR has a much more elaborated, um, discussion on all these differences and changes over the fiscal years. So one of the things I, I like is a small, easy graph to look at and see the change in the net position. So this is just the difference between your assets and your liabilities. How much cash and equipment you have versus how much you owe for them. So what's the difference between those? And is it, are your assets getting better or is it getting worse? And so you could like to see that trend is kind of tracking up. Um, and so this is just a nice little snapshot of, um, how things are trending up since two thousand fifteen. And you'll, um, just to let you know that two thousand fourteen and fifteen, and we do have this noted in the PAFR, that change was due to a change in accounting principle related to, um, uh, PERS, uh, pension funding. So it is really a financial mechanism, just accounting wise. So statement activities, this is our income statement. So this is our revenues versus our expenses and making sure that they're in line with where they should be and that you don't have uh, too many revenues that you're not actually using for the right purposes in your expenditures. You shouldn't have a giant gap. You shouldn't be holding off to a bunch of revenue without a strategic plan or a reason to use them. Um, and then they're also, you want to make sure you're keeping track of your expenses and they're not exceeding your revenues. And that they're in line with what, um, the strategic objectives are for the city. So, um, we've had an increase in program revenues due to grants receipts as well as an increase in charges for services primarily from the business ticket activities, which increased by one point two million dollars. There was a minor increase in general revenues primarily due to increased other taxes, primarily cannabis business tax. Um, total expenses, uh, increased primarily due to public safety cost and increased costs for business-type activities of water and wastewater processing. And again, there's a lot more discussion on that within the CAFR. So you're all very aware of my chart that I have on the total revenues. And you'll notice that this one's a little bit different because isn't just, this isn't just looking at the general fund, but the PAFR offers the, the whole citywide picture. So this is a revenues all across the city, including our special revenue funds and our wastewater, uh, waste water and water funds. So that's where you'll see those charges for services for those there. So it does make that sales tax and, um, measure G tax shrink a little bit, but it definitely still shows how important it is, not just to the general fund revenue sources, but the citywide revenue sources as a whole. And on the flip side, expenses, where are all these monies going? Um, just like we were talking earlier, this is really, um, important when we have these budget discussions is, okay, here's what we can hopefully expect to have all these, um, revenue funds coming in. But we need to pay attention to where they're going to and how we're best using those funds for their sources and what, um, expenses actually can be used. So wastewater and, uh, water, they go mostly to other sources for actually purchasing those services from outside, um, groups. So, uh, making sure we're tracking those and paying attention to those and knowing what piece of the pie those are all being already used by. And again, here's the, another quick snapshot, um, providing those, uh, graphics that we need for our PAFR. Um, to translate this giant document into something that's easily, um, digestible by anyone on the street. Is this just difference between the revenues and expenses and knowing that, hey, this is the gap of the difference? And are we secure for our future for that difference between those two to keep that funding balance going forward? To deal with things like emergencies that come out in the future. And so you'll see that that does, did, did change a little bit over this last year. Stop shivering. Okay, um, one perception that, um, a lot of citizens have when they get their property tax bill like myself is that that's where all the money goes for the city. And so we do like to provide this snapshot of, um, the property taxes. And how much of those property taxes actually come back to operating their city? Not the library, not the school district, not, you know, the county. This is what actually can come into the city for us for general purpose of use within the general fund. And so it shows that just out of every dollar of your property taxes, only eleven cents really come back to the city for operations. And then, of course, now that, um, we've had it come to council, we're going to make sure this is widely distributed. Um, for anyone who needs to read it, we're going to get the flip chart back up on the city website with the updated version and get it rolled out and published, um, online. So you can easily see it there. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quarter. Uh, I much prefer the PAFR versus the CAFR. The opposite of Ms. Harvey.
Oh, I want both, at least the PAFR I can carry around with me everywhere. The CAFR I have to, you know, really think about carrying that thing around.
As they say, it's a heavy lift.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Angela. Any, uh, questions from the council? Not at this hour. Okay, thank you. Um, now we'll go on to the, uh, city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Yeah, the PAFR is portable and the CAFR is good for self-defense.
I'll have to remember that.
You'd need to knock somebody out, yeah. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Landman, did you have a question on the?
Yeah, uh, I think it's getting late and I might have missed it, forgive me if I did, but I think we were, it was required that we adopt a motion to receive and file the PAFR.
You are correct. Would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, I might as well, for sake of time. I'd like to move that we receive and file the fiscal year, uh, twenty nineteen twenty, popular annual financial report or PAFR, as, as it is well-known and received.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, Ms. Burgess?
Council member Ford?
Yes.
Council member Sparks?
Yes.
Council member Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, thank you, Mr. Obid. You're up.
All right, thank you, mayor, members of the council. Um, so as I think we all know, the stay-at-home order in the Bay Area is lifted. Sonoma County is part of the Bay Area region. It was lifted yesterday, Monday. Um, so that means that we revert to our underlying color tier, which remains purple because that's our favorite color in Sonoma County. So we'll be staying in purple for a while. Um, and then this is, uh, the, the tier, the color tier is based on the case rate data. The county's vaccination program is still working through their special higher risk groups. So at this all phase, what they call phase one A tiers are open for vaccination and that consists, generally speaking of healthcare workers, first responders, uh, residents of skilled nursing facilities. And the county has begun phase one B, tier one, which is primarily people of age seventy-five. So the vaccination rollout tiers are incredibly, you know, they can be, uh, kind of confusing, but that's, they're still working through special groups at this point. They're not, they haven't moved to general populations. Um, weather, uh, as you all hear on the outside, the weather forecast is for, is expected to be the largest rainfall event of the season this date, which could cause flooding, um, tonight. Public Works, as you might have seen on social media, opened the self-serve sandbag station today to help, um, our citizens get prepared. And the sandbags also, of course, can be purchased at local hardware stores. And, um, uh, also, weather permitting, we, um, intend to install another round of tents. Um, this is just a follow-up to the, uh, city council action to provide tents for some of our restaurants so they can do extended outdoor dining. Um, so in addition to the tents that are already out there, the ones that are currently in front of, um, Redwood Cafe and, um, Cafe Salsa and Spankies, we're, um, and Cotati Coffee. Um, we're looking at installing some more this Thursday and they would be in front of, um, Shigae Sushi, uh, Trade Wins and Down to Earth, another larger tent like what's in front of Redwood Cafe. And, and then finally Grab South are in this batch. And, um, Public Works also built a platform for the new tent, just like they did for the Redwood Cafe tent because of the slope of the street. So they can have a flat platform to, um, do outdoor dining. So anyways, weather permitting, that's, um, the plan for this Thursday. Um, uh, just a quick note that the Community Development's Visual Preference Survey for Housing concluded last week with over seventy individual responses being received. So that was a great turnout. And, um, just a big thank you for everyone who participated and we're going to be incorporating these, um, uh, responses into future housing element updates and other housing policy work currently underway in, including the, um, creation of the objective design guidelines for housing that we're also working on right now. Um, I think, as you all know, we have a special joint meeting of the City Council and Planning Commission scheduled for February twenty-third. And, um, it's to give a presentation on just the basics of land use so that everyone, um, is up to speed on, on, um, sort of the ins and outs of that. And then, um, CD staff have also already started work to compile the housing production numbers for twenty twenty and will expect, and we expect to present that to the, um, to the council in March, ahead of the April first deadline for submitting that to the state. Um, Admin Services is, um, they partnered with our, um, software provider to provide an iPad to one lucky customer to, um, sign up for auto pay. Um, the, anyone that registers online for auto pay before February eighth can be eligible to win that, um, that iPad. And then, um, the last, the last two things I'll just say real quick is that, um, the neighborhood officer beat meetings are coming up. Um, they're going to be held via Zoom and they're scheduled February first through the third for the different beat areas and you can find details on the city website headlines and Facebook as well. If you are curious about, um, uh, when those are and if you want to join the, join those meetings. And then the last thing is, uh, during the week of February eighth through twelfth, our rec department will be hosting our inaugural Love Your Neighbor Week. And it's going to have a different activity each day to celebrate our community and I won't go through the long summary of what all that is because I know it's late, but, um, check out the website and the Facebook post for more information. But there'll be a different activity each day, um, for different um, cool, fun things for people to do. And, um, and then we do plan to also have drive-in movies in March. So, anyway, with that, I would be, I'll just stop there and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obid. Any questions for the city manager? Council? At this point, we are, uh, public comment on non-action agenda items. Do we have any attendees that would like to make a non-action item agenda comment? Seeing none?
Mayor Moore, uh, we actually need to cover city council member reports.
Uh, yes, we do. Um, I would like to, um, if we have a consensus, if we can move those, um, city council member reports to the next meeting unless there's something pressing that needs to be discussed tonight. We have a consensus to move those. Okay. Thank you. And now we'll move on to the non-action agenda items. I don't see anybody raising their hand and public comment on there. And finally, uh, item fifteen, information received after the agenda was posted.
Nothing further.
Okay. Well, um, thank you very much. Council members, public, staff, participants, all of those that had the fortitude to stay with us tonight. Um, some very important discussions and I'm sure will continue down the road. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting before midnight at eleven forty-six PM. Thank you all very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, everybody. Thank you very much.
Good night.